What's that? Yeah, yeah, I, yep, thank you.
The October 6, 2025 Auburn City Council Workshop will be called to order. The first item tonight is the FY '24 Audit Presentation. Ms. Earl?
Mayor, Council, good evening. We have our auditors, audit firm here from RKO. They will be presenting for you. So we have Casey Leonard and Sarah Dodge, and I'm going to let them go ahead and go through this with you.
Good evening. So a big thank you to Kelsey Earl and Amanda Kuchar and all of their staff. You know, it was a pleasure working with everyone this year. It was a little bit challenging. I think, you know, we've gotten to the point where we're a little behind, we're catching up, we're making progress. But yeah, a big thank you to everyone. I know it's a lot of work to kind of get to this point. I have a PowerPoint presentation, which I'm going to go through, and as I do so, if anyone has any questions, please feel free to, to jump in. So this first graph here is a summary of the audit results. In terms of the financial statement opinion, the city, which includes the school department, received an unmodified opinion, which means the financial statements are fairly stated in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, or was a clean opinion, which is exactly what you want to see. In addition to the financial statement audit in fiscal year 2024, we also performed two separate compliance audits, which we usually do for the city. So first of all, we performed an audit in accordance with government auditing standards. It's what we usually call a yellow book audit. And here, we considered the city's internal controls over the financial reporting process. So we look at all the procedures that are in place that help to ensure that the year-end balances are materially correct. We also tested the city's compliance with certain provisions of laws, regulations, contracts, and grant agreements. And in terms of that yellow book audit, we had two material weaknesses, two significant deficiencies, one noncompliance with laws and regulations, and eight recommendations. So we have a fair amount to go through. We're going to circle back to this. I'm actually going to go through the PowerPoint presentation, and then we're going to circle back to the compliance report, and Sarah's going to go through that in a few minutes And then also, again, in fiscal year 2024, because the city and the school expended more than $750,000 worth of federal grant proceeds, we performed an audit in accordance with Uniform Guidance. So this is a federal compliance audit. In 2024, the city and the school expended $14.9 million, so a very significant amount of money. This type of audit is kind of a program or project-specific audit, so we kind of rotate different programs each year, depending on amounts that are expended in our assessments of risk. So in 2024, we tested four, I'm sorry, we, yeah, we tested a total of four programs, three on the city side, one on the school side. So on the city side, we tested the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds, or what's commonly known as ARPA. We tested the CDBG program. We tested the school lunch program, the child nutrition cluster program. And we tested the housing and urban development home improvement partnership program. And from that testing, we had four findings. And again, we're going to, we're going to circle back to that. Sarah's going to talk about that once we talk about the compliance report in a few minutes here. On this next graph, we kind of dive into some of the financial results for the year. And this is an analysis of your fund balance over the last five years. And we take your fund balance and we kind of carve it up into different categories, and I'm just briefly going to describe what's included in each one of those. So first of all, you have non-spendable fund balance. That represents resources which cannot be spent because they're not in a spendable form. These amounts can't easily be converted to cash, and so we're required per our standards to put them into that non-spendable category. And this specifically represented long-term receivables and prepaid expenditures. Then we had restricted fund balance that comprises resources with constraints placed on their use externally. So these are amounts that have strings attached to them. And in the context of the citywide financial statements, this represented the school department's general fund fund balance. Because your school is supported through state education subsidy, and those amounts have to be expended on educating your students, any remaining amounts have to be restricted for that purpose. So we put them into that restricted category. And then there's assigned fund balance that represents amounts that are constrained by the, constrained by the city's intent to be used for specific purposes. So these are amounts that the council is setting aside. And that included $1,875,000 set aside to balance the following year budget, so the 2025 budget, $1,076,000 set aside for self-insurance, and approximately $2.9 million for encumbrances and reserves. And there's a, a very lengthy footnote in the notes to the financial statements if you want to see all the detail of what's included in there. And then unassigned fund balance is what remains after amounts are recognized in the other categories. It's essentially what's left over. Total fund balance decreased in 2024 from 20, about 27.8 million to a little bit more than 25 million, which is a decrease of about 2.8 million. We're going to see some of the reasons why that happened on the next few graphs. Graph five shows general fund revenues, and this is a budget-to-actual comparison. And again, this is citywide. In a few more graphs, I'm going to focus just on the school. So for the most part here, I'm focusing on the municipal side of, of the city. In total, revenues were about $2.8 million over budget, so a pretty large amount. Some larger variances are mentioned here. Tax revenues were over budget by about $789,000 due to greater-than-expected excise taxes and the change in deferred taxes. Intergovernmental revenues are over budget by about $967,000 primarily due to higher-than-expected state revenue sharing and state education subsidy. Interest revenues are over budget by about $685,000 due to higher-than-expected rates of return. It's been the case for many of our clients in the last few years. And miscellaneous municipal revenues were over budget by about $121,000 due to the receipt of insurance claim proceeds, and those amounts were unbudgeted. As for expenditures, expenditures were about, just about $1.8 million under budget. And again, some larger variances are mentioned here. General government expenditures are under budget by about $1.6 million primarily due to lower-than-expected costs related to business and community development, as well as lower-than-expected benefit costs increased, increases. Health, welfare, and recreation were under budget by about $730,000 due to higher-than-expected rents. Public services expenditures were over budget by $113,000 primarily due to unexpected public work staffing needs. I believe there was a fair amount of overtime there. And other appropriations were under budget by about $654,000, and that was primarily due to 550,000 of emergency reserves that were not used. So just kind of an overview of what was going on with expenditures in fiscal year 2024. Graph seven shows unassigned fund balance as a percentage of budget. So this is one of those measurements that we look at to determine if a community is financially healthy. As a firm and really as a finance, you know, as part of the financial industry, there's a recommendation that you have one to two months' worth of expenditures, which equals 8.3% to 16.7%. That percentage for the city as of June 30, 2024 equals 7.93%, so just a little bit lower than what we generally recommend. With that being said, in fiscal year 2024, you put more into assigned fund balance. And so I think that's why, kind of why you're seeing that reduction. You know, I think that percentage is, is, is pretty good. You know, that's, that's pretty standard for a community the size of Auburn. The city does have a fund balance policy, and that's to maintain unrestricted fund balance of no less than 10% and no more than 14% of general fund annual budget. When we calculated that for 2024, that percentage equaled 13.95%. So you're right in that range, right in the top end of that range. And honestly, I think that's the first time, I know you, in the past, you guys have been below it, you've been above it. I think this is the first time you kind of really nailed it. I know you're going to have a conversation about fund balance right after this, so I know I've had some conversations with, with Kelsey. And hopefully, this is the direction that you're going in. It would be nice for that policy to be just cleaned up a little bit, some examples. It can be a little confusing in terms of interpretation. You know, after I read that, I know you guys have had it since 2018, 2019. It just, I think it could be cleaned up a little bit. So hopefully, that's part of that conversation. And then the next three graphs just focus on the school department. So this first one shows the school department's fund balance over the last five years. Similar to the city, I'm just going to talk about some of these different categories. So non-spendable fund balance, similar to the city, these are amounts that can't be spent, they're not easily converted to cash, and so we have to put them into that non-spendable category. And that represented prepaid expenditures as of June 30, 2024. Assigned and committed fund balance equaled about $3.6 million in total, represents amounts designated for the subsequent year budget and capital and other reserves. Similar to the city, there's a great footnote in the notes to the financial statements that explains everything that's included in there. And unassigned fund balance is what remains after amounts are put into the other categories. In total, fund balance decreased for the school by about $366,000 between 2023 and And then some budget-to-actual comparisons for just the school. In total, revenues were about $807,000 over budget. Intergovernmental revenues were over budget by about $748,000 primarily due to higher-than-expected state education subsidy and multilingual learner hardship funds. And charges for services were over budget by about $155,000 due to higher-than-expected tuition charges. It's always difficult to determine how many students are going to attend Auburn schools from other communities, so it's pretty common for us to see variances in that area. As for expenditures, expenditures were about $627,000 under budget. And again, some of the larger variances are mentioned here. Regular instruction expenditures are under budget by about $849,000 primarily due to vacancies. Special education instruction expenditures are under budget by $336,000 due to lower-than-expected out-of-district placement costs and teacher vacancies. Student and staff expenditures are under budget by about $246,000 due to higher-than-budgeted staffing costs. And transportation and bus expenditures were over budget by $204,000 primarily due to higher-than-expected transportation costs for athletic events. So just kind of a broad overview of what was going on with your financial statements in 2024. Were there any questions on any of the graphs before we circle back to the compliance report?
Any questions from the council or from school board members, school committee members? No, not seeing any, please continue.
So now, we're going to circle back to the compliance report, and Sarah's going to go through that.
Okay. I'm going to start with internal controls over financial reporting, and then I'm going to end with federal award compliance and internal controls. So controls over financial reporting fall under two main categories. Material weaknesses, which are deficiencies in internal control that could cause a material misstatement of the city's financial statements that would not be prevented or detected and correctly corrected in a timely manner, and significant deficiencies, or deficiencies or a combination of deficiencies in internal control, oh, I'm sorry, thank you, in internal control that are less severe than a material weakness yet important enough to merit attention by those charged with governance. We also report on noncompliance relative to the financial statements and other findings that do not meet the severity of a material weakness or significant deficiency, but are recommendations and best practices for management. So I'll describe the deficiencies in the order of severity, starting with material weaknesses. There were two material weaknesses. The first was related to grant account reconciliations. So during the audit, we noted that grant funds received and expended under various city and school programs were not reconciled on a regular basis. In particular, the main Department of Transportation grant funds were not requested timely, and no receivables were booked for grant funds earned during the audit year. In addition, other grants, including school grants, the ARPA grant, and HUD grant revenues were not recognized to match grant expenditures in accordance with GAAP, and has caused a material audit entries. The second material weakness relates to maintenance of capital asset records. During our testing, we found material errors in recorded additions, material additions that were missed, and unrecorded retainage in the current year capital asset schedules. The city provided spreadsheet was not rolled forward completely, and the errors required audit adjustments totaling several million dollars. Turnover in key finance positions and year-end time constraints obviously contributed to the inaccuracies in that schedule. I also have two significant deficiencies. One relates to the city accounting software to school accounting software reconciliation. The city and the school department utilize separate accounting softwares. So monthly school activity is imported to the city's trial balance. A reconciliation is performed to ensure that the city's balances match the school's balances after the import. However, this reconciliation is complicated by miscoded transactions that result in accounts with commingled city and school account activity, new accounts that may not be factored into the reconciliation, and miscommunications between the city and school. So although the process has improved during fiscal year '24, there is still some room for improvement here, and we just want to ensure that all school accounts can accurately and completely be traced to the city's books. This is especially important as the school migrates its activity to Munis in fiscal year '26. Second significant deficiency relates to preparation of financial statements. As part of the audit process, there were several significant audit adjustments posted to correct the balances in accounts receivable, prepaid's, capital assets, accounts payable, accrued payroll, pension, and other post-employment benefits, and deferred revenue to ensure that accounts were properly recorded in accordance with GAAP. We proposed a total of 66 audit entries in fiscal year '24, and that was up from 44 entries in fiscal year '23. For an entity this size, we would expect to see about a dozen entries. So in addition, due to time and budget constraints, the city determined it was more cost-effective to have the auditors prepare the financial statements. But for a city this size, we would recommend more time and resources be allocated to year-end reconciliations, and we recommend city staff continue their training efforts to ensure that staff will be able to prepare their own financial statements in the future. Also, during our testing, we noted one instance of noncompliance with laws and regulations, and that has to do with noncompliance with LD 1198. Main LD 1198 permits school administrative units to retain an unassigned fund balance of up to 9% of the previous year's school budget for fiscal years 2021 through 2025. Exceeding this threshold constitutes noncompliance with the state law. The school department's unassigned general fund balance has exceeded the statutory limit of 9% of the total budget for each of the past three years. The school committee intends to assign excess fund balance to capital reserve accounts in the upcoming year to avoid continued noncompliance with this law. And then I have a variety of other comments, which again are best practices and management recommendations based on our test work. The first one relates to ambulance billing service provider controls. The city contracts with medical reimbursement services, or MRS for short, to process ambulance billings and manage, manage receivable collections. MRS performs key financial functions on behalf of the city that impact financial reporting. However, MRS does not provide a system and organization controls SOC 1 Type 2 audit report, which would offer assurance that internal controls over financial reporting are suitably designed and operating effectively. So our recommendation is that the city work with MRS to undergo the appropriate SOC 1 Type 2 audit, and that way, the city will then have assurance over MRS's financial controls. The second is related to city and school bank reconciliations. Reconciliations for scholarship and student activity funds accounts at the school were completed several months after year-end. The reconciliations were delayed because cash, because cash deposits were accounted for in one account in the accounting system, but were actually deposited to different banking accounts, which just created complexity in, in the accounting reconciliation. Also, cash overages and shortages and non-sufficient fund checks should be written off to revenue expenses when incurred, I'm sorry, that was at the city side. In addition to the scholarship funds, the city had asset balances for cash overages and shortages and non-sufficient fund checks, and those types of activities should be written off to revenue or expense when incurred rather than accounted for as a balance sheet item. As a result, initially, cash balances were misstated at the city, and we proposed entries to correct those balances. We also had an issue with approvals and supporting documentation for city journal entries. We reviewed 21 entries, and six of the entries that we tested were not reviewed by anyone other than the employee who prepared them. Journal entries can be a way in which management can override their own internal control systems. So it's imperative that journal entries be reviewed and approved by somebody other than the preparer. We recommend that someone other than the journal entry preparer review journal entries and supporting documentation, and sign off on the entries to document their approval. We also had a comment on school information technology procedures. The Auburn School Department was missing some formal written procedures governing backup and data retention, information security, password controls, and change management. Also, annual cybersecurity training had not been implemented in fiscal year '24. Without formal IT policies and procedures and annual cybersecurity training, the school is exposed to an increased risk of data loss, system downtime, and security breaches. So we recommend the school develop and implement formal backup and data retention, information security, password controls, and change management policies. We also recommend implementing annual cybersecurity training for all staff, which it appears the school has already started to do. The next comment is related to revenue recognition at the Norway Savings Bank Arena, or short for NSBA. The NSBA signs annual contracts for business sponsorships. These contracts often don't run within the July 1 through June 30 fiscal year. Contracts that span multiple reporting periods are recognized in the year in which the contract starts rather than prorated to only include the months earned within the reporting period. This practice causes revenues and receivables to be overstated, though audit entries were necessary to correct revenue recognition for these contracts in fiscal year '24. In addition, several old material receivable balances over 180 days old were not written off or allowed for as uncollectible. These receivables were still not collected after 12 months of year-end, and currently, the NSBA does not have a policy for establishing an allowance for doubtful accounts for those types of old receivables. So we suggest management create a policy. The next comment relates to procurement for the fresh fruits and vegetables program, or FFVP for short. Vendors utilized for the FFVP program were not competitively procured in accordance with the city's procurement policy, which requires all contracts to be competitively bid if they exceed $30,000. We tested two contracts with local fresh fruit and vegetables vendors, and although a pricing analysis was performed on the vendors, we were unable to obtain evidence they were competitively procured. In addition, there was no documentation of suspension and debarment procedures performed for those vendors in accordance with Uniform Guidance, and that is a federal program. The next comment is related to lack of written agreements with the actuary who does a workers' compensation reserve analysis. The city does not have a formal written agreement in place with the actuary responsible for conducting the annual workers' compensation reserve analysis. We believe the city should establish a formal written agreement with the vendor that includes a detailed scope of services, reporting requirements and timelines, fee structure, and payment terms, and responsibilities and liabilities of both parties.
Sarah, can I just jump in real quick? You've mentioned a couple of times, or a couple of items that the school is already working on. Nothing, I just wanted to mention that, a reminder that this is from July 1, '23 to June 30, '24. And if you look in this book here, starting on page 12, you'll see some of the comments from management. So these are our corrective actions to some of these findings and comments. The city has actually also started some of these things. For example, the ambulance billing services, they're currently conducting an audit, as well as providing us their internal controls. There is now a written agreement with the actuarial services that was done beginning of '25, I think, back when this first came up. So things like that, those are in this report, just so you can kind of follow along with what she's saying. We're not completely ignoring the comments. Some things are already in progress because this is in the past. I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that.
Thank you, Kelsey. I appreciate you, you highlighting that. How many more? We have one more comment, and that was for lack of secondary review for deposits processed at the high school. Out of 40 activity fund deposits tested at the high school, 12 deposits did not include evidence of a secondary review by a person independent of the individual responsible for processing the deposit. We recommend the school business office implement a formal procedure, I think you have done, requiring all deposits to be reviewed and verified by a secondary individual who is not involved in the initial processing of the deposit. The verification should be documented by a signature or initials and retained with the deposit records. And I want to remind everybody that if it's not documented, to us, we can't say it happened. So it's possible that journal entries were reviewed, but it, somebody didn't sign off on it, or we would call that an exception because we can't verify that it actually occurred. Now I'm on to the second part of the findings, and these are the findings in question costs for federal awards. As Casey noted earlier, there were four programs that were tested. Two of the programs were qualified due to material noncompliance, and those are the ARPA program and the CDBG cluster. So I'll start, again, with the most severe findings. These are material weaknesses and material noncompliance that have caused the qualified opinions. The first is on ARPA reporting. As a recipient of ARPA funds, the city is required to submit quarterly project and expenditure reports to the U.S. Treasury. These submissions report cumulative and quarterly obligations and expenditures by project, project income, and subaward and vendor information. We tested two of the quarterly reports and found errors in both reports. The errors were primarily due to the volume and complexity of the city's ARPA projects. I think you have over 50, which is, it is a challenge to keep track of. We recommend that a secondary financial person review the expenditures and obligations reported for accuracy before the report is submitted to the U.S. Treasury. The second material weakness and material noncompliance is related to ARPA procurement. The city must follow federal procurement standards to ensure contracts are procured at the lowest price and with adequate competition. In addition, the city is not allowed to use federal grant funds to contract with vendors who are suspended or disbarred from receiving federal funds. Of the six contracts we tested under the ARPA program, three lacked documentation demonstrating that appropriate bidding procedures were followed, or that a cost or price analysis was performed prior to award. And again, if we couldn't get documentation of the, the bidding procedures, we consider that an exception. That does not necessarily mean that that did not occur. Two contracts had no evidence that suspension and debarment procedures were followed, such as checking the system of award management, SAM.gov, or obtaining certifications for contractors. We recommend the city strengthen its procurement policies by ensuring all departments consistently document bidding processes and cost-price analysis, implementing centralized oversight or checklists to document compliance with suspension and debarment requirements, and providing training to individuals responsible for contracting and procuring goods and service that, services that are covered by federal grant awards. The next material weakness and material noncompliance relates to the CDBG grant reporting. The CDBG grant requires a filing of a quarterly PR 29 cash-on-hand quarterly report within 30 days of the end of each fiscal quarter, and accurate reporting of program income balances within that report. The city submitted the required PR 29 cash-on-hand reports late for all the quarters that we reviewed. I believe we reviewed all four quarters. Additionally, the beginning balance of program income was reported incorrectly for all quarters reviewed. In addition, we found there was no secondary review of either the PR 29 cash-on-hand quarterly report or the PR 26 financial summary report, which is another report that's required by HUD. We recommend the city establish and enforce internal deadlines to ensure timely submission of required reports, and implement a secondary review process to identify potential reporting inaccuracies. And we also have three significant deficiencies, which are significant internal control issues, but they did not qualify the report. The first one was related to child nutrition cluster reporting. Last year, we had a finding that there were some inaccuracies in the meal counts that were submitted. This year, we tested them again, we didn't find any inaccuracies, but we did find that there was still no review process in place to ensure that the school lunch director's numbers were being verified before they were certified and submitted to the state. numbers were being verified before they were certified and submitted to the state. So I think that you guys have already created a policy to ensure that the business manager reviews the meal counts before they're submitted, but that had not happened as of fiscal year The next significant deficiencies relates to the CDBG grant pre-inspection reports. So when CDBG funds are used for rehabilitation, the city must ensure the work is properly completed in accordance with applicable laws, codes, and other requirements related to housing safety, quality, or habitability. Pre-rehabilitation inspections are conducted to identify the deficiencies that need to be corrected. Deficiencies noted in the pre-rehabilitation inspections are required to be incorporated into the rehabilitation contract. Although it appeared these inspections were occurring, we were unable to obtain documentation of those pre-inspection reports. So we suggest that procedures be implemented to ensure that inspection reports, photographs, and supporting documentation are maintained in paper or digital format. And then the last significant deficiency is related to home investment partnerships programs, subrecipient monitoring procedures. The city did not perform a documented risk assessment of subrecipients under the home program to determine the appropriate level and type of monitoring as required by Uniform Guidance. Additionally, the city did not obtain or review subrecipient single audit reports to identify and follow up on any findings related to the home program. Two of the four contracts with expenditures in fiscal year 2024 were tested. We recommend the city implement formal procedures to conduct and document risk assessments for all subrecipients of the home program, obtain and review subrecipient single audit reports annually, and follow up on any findings related to the home program to ensure corrective actions have been taken. That was a lot. Are there any questions?
Any questions from the council or the school committee? Council Pla.
Thank you. I have a question. I wonder if it's going to be answered by either Kelsey or Amanda. But with all the stuff you've laid out, I know that a lot of it we're already working to correct, as Kelsey mentioned. I know we have, especially with some of the having extra reviews throughout processes. I know in the school department, those are some things we've already enabled. So I guess my question is to our finance managers, what are some of the pieces that still remain that you think will be a challenge moving forward? Obviously, we hear a lot with journal entries, reconciliation, procurement. I think procurement's a low-hanging fruit. You can figure that one out. I think journal entries is a growing concern. It sounds like we were up from 44 from last year. I had asked in previous meetings, you know, what was the financial cost to us for having to have you guys enter all that? And, you know, it's a significant number. So I guess just to reiterate the question, what are the challenges that you guys see moving forward where, you know, you may need support from the council, or the school committee, or folks outside of your spheres?
So there's a few low-hanging fruit items. Those journal entries, it sounds a lot scarier than it is. That was implemented back at the end of '24, beginning of '25, where, I think I've mentioned before, when we talked about corrective actions, when we were giving the corrective action reports, former staff kind of had an all-access and could just do journal entries without having to actually have anyone else approve it. No one can do a journal entry without another person reviewing and approving it. It's set up in the system. No single person can do that. Nobody's a super user, except the IT director, but she doesn't do journal entries. So no one's a super user. Every single journal entry requires a secondary review and approval, every single time. So that was a low-hanging fruit for us that we could actually very easily implement, and we did that a while ago. There's also a requirement to put in some paper documentation, so we upload any sort of report that shows a number or reason why that is being entered. So we do the same thing for purchasing. So our purchase order, and everyone reviewed the purchasing policy fairly recently with council. We changed some of the limits and requirements for purchase orders. The same thing with purchase orders is that someone enters a purchase order, another person has to review, ensure that backup documentation is attached before it gets approved, before it can get used. So things like that have already started. The city-school reconciliation continues to be a difficulty, at least for FY '25. That will absolutely come up again. The two different systems have just been an absolute nightmare for us for years. That said, school is now on the same financial software as city, so we haven't done a lot with that yet, other than some reconciliations, and it's already a lot easier on everybody involved. So while that is a difficulty, and will continue to be so, and show in continued reports, I don't see that being a continued issue moving forward, especially once we've gotten the hang of what that means for us, and who's doing entries for what. Because it used to be city would enter all the imports for school, and now which ones are school doing? So we've met a few times and decided some of those things. Some of the pieces, one of the pieces that I think is going to be most difficult for us is the preparation of financial statements. So our staff has done quite a bit of training for preparing an audit, preparing financial statements. What we're currently planning on doing is having a separate entity assist us with preparing financial statements, sort of like a training program where we're doing them, but this other entity is helping us with that, and then we can provide those to RKO for the audit. So that's what we're in progress with, hoping to have that, but I don't, I don't, it won't be ready for FY '25. It's something that all of this '23, '24, '25, it's kind of all happened in this year. But we will be on top of that and ready for that for the FY '26 audit. So we've started that. It won't be in part of FY '25, or it won't be done, but we have begun that.
Other questions from the council or from the school committee? Council Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When you talk about putting in place, getting some more help to plot this out so that you're more on top of things, where is this money coming from to pay for this extra help?
It's already budgeted as part of our audit preparation. We just wouldn't have to pay, overpay RKO to assist us with these things. We are budgeted for this already.
Other questions? Council Walker.
Thank you. Could you explain a little bit more about the Norway Savings Bank Arena? Why is that a problem going with us now?
So this stemmed from Twin City Thunder, is that what they were called? Twin City Thunder. So there was a large unpaid amount from that group. We had never had an unpaid amount that sat around for some time at the arena. This is the first time, and due to new policy, the only time that that will occur. So that sat unpaid, went through legal. We were waiting for the final ruling on what that was going to look like, what their requirements were going to be for repayment. So we have since entered an account, and I'm trying to think of what it was called.
Allowance for doubtful accounts.
Thank you. Allowance for doubtful accounts. So the Norway Arena does have that account now, so if, for some reason, it happens, we can account for that. However, as I stated, we're working on policy where there won't be, there's prepaid requirements, especially for larger contracts. So this was from that one group, and that's why it hadn't happened to us before.
All of that finance comes through our city, right? Yeah.
Yep. So the arena handles their own finances. However, the city reviews those things. So we were aware of that unpaid balance, as well as it going through, like I said, the legal, city's legal. But it was one of those, we thought it would be paid, even with the judgment, it ended up not being paid. So we were kind of giving them the benefit of the doubt, and it bit us a little bit with the financial reporting.
Thank you for that. The other thing is, I'm thankful that it sounded like the recreation department got through pretty easily this year, and that's a great thing, because I know the last two or three times, there was a problem with, you know, the way the money was handled, other things, other things. So it sounded great anyways on that end, even though the arena got into a little trouble.
They're a little bit different, but yeah. So we've also done some cash handling policy review. Even staff that has already been here and reviewed the cash handling policy has all been required to re-review and re-sign. We're doing that on an annual basis. So it's just a reminder of how things need to be handled, why they're handled that way. Like I said, even veteran staff are seeing it on an annual basis now.
Other questions or comments? Council Count.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a congratulations, thank you, and job well done, because it sounds like a very complicated thing, in particular that the migration that you guys have been working very hard to do to get onto one system. I'm looking forward to seeing a lot of efficiencies gained and accuracy, so.
Council Pla. One more, one more quick question. Out of our collective memory, how, is this report of our 2024 year, how much sooner in the year was it compared to last year? Did we gain any ground in the last 12 months? Okay. I know that's a...
I don't think so, no. I think it was probably within a month, but I think we were later. I mean, the report honestly was dated today. I think last, I think the '23, I'm going to say it was like September, maybe early September, mid-September. I think it was in September. Maybe it could have even been August.
It was not August.
Okay. Then it was early September.
And can you remind us or confirm, is that, is that the preferred time for a municipal entity to be, I mean, should it be in May, June, July? What are the right...
No, it should be in December.
It should be in December.
December.
For the previous year.
I've done this audit, I think, since 2010. I mean, we went until probably 20, 2020, 21, where things, just staffing issues, I mean, it's happened at a lot of our clients. A lot of our clients have additional grants. There's been, in our industry, things have slowed down. It's not just Auburn. But forever, audits, if you had a, if you had a June 30 audit, your audit was out in December. You guys were issuing an ACF, it's due in December. School audits are due in December. You can get an extension for both of those, but that's what it's due. I mean, that's, that is always the plan. This year, we're hopeful, I think, we're, so we did a big chunk of field work in September for '25. We have another week scheduled in early November. I mean, we were doing a lot of field work, honestly, in '24, in January. So, I mean, it had kind of gotten pushed off.
So understanding that this year is not necessarily any more beneficial than last year, from a timing perspective, 2024 was no more, no more better than 2023.
Correct.
From your professional perspective, are we making headway for 2025?
I think we are in better shape. Yeah. We are in better shape.
We hadn't even begun at this point for 2024.
Yeah, we did a little in September. I think we had, we had some, RKO had some time that opened up, but it wasn't, it wasn't three weeks. We are definitely ahead.
And you folks were much more prepared.
Yes. Yeah.
Early.
There's still, yeah, there's still things to be worked on, but yeah, definitely.
Mr. Manager.
Thanks, Mayor. I really appreciate it. RKO's been super working through, and they've been with us for a long time. They do a great job, and I think as we look at the guide, you know, some of the recommendations, here's the things we want to see, right? I think this is, obviously, we like to say, no, you don't need anything, but we want to have that feedback. We want to make sure we're making improvements to systems. We're putting things in place. I think it's been mentioned a couple times, but I'll highlight it here, is that when you have a finance, both finance officers, offices having such a turnover, it's a big lift. And so we're putting things in place. I think there's a combination here. Not only is it we had new staff, we had a considerable amount of requirements for funding that we've received, that we never received before, but we did not do anything as far as staffing for that. And so it's just, let's take what we have and just put more on and try to make that. So we are, we are assessing that. We're looking at, you know, how do we align our team? How do we put people in place to be able to assist with that? Because that workload is greater. And so, so we'll continue, we'll be coming forward in the budget process, talk about things that we've done. I know, I meet with the superintendent on a regular basis. They're looking at that internally, and so I think there's a lot of, a lot of things that we need to work at. And I think what Kelsey mentioned about having, going in and reaching out to an entity to help with the pre-audit, that'll be a huge benefit. It'll be great for the team to be able to come in and have that, but what it's also getting is that training for our staff to be able to handle some of that, which will be really helpful. So I really want to thank the staff. I think they've done a tremendous job. We are always optimistic that we're going to be where we need to be, but systems are just tying out reconciling, you know, I think is really essential for the team as they work through that, and they've really made a lot of improvements. I think Counselor Platts, you had mentioned at the last audit that we would have the quarterly reporting, which we did, but it also created a team, administrative team, with my office, Dr. Doris's office, meeting with both finance on a regular basis. We talked recently about not needing to do that monthly, but doing that quarterly. And so our team will still continue to do that, just as a check and balance, where are we at? How does staff feel? Making sure there's good communication back and forth. Those are all essential components to making sure we have a good progress. But I think the best news that we heard, Casey said it in the very beginning, it's a clean audit, and that's what we want to hear. So that's great for when we go out to bond, we want to see that, but also demonstrates that we are moving in the right, right direction, and even though we have some of these that we need to address, ultimately, the $129 million budget that we're working through, not to mention all those other grants and other funding sources, we're managing them well. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you very much to the staff and RKO for all the hard work, the very thorough audit, and the clarity of the recommendations. I agree with the manager. We had some of the same conversation a year ago. I think things are going in the right direction to try to clean up some of these deficiencies. I would urge the council and the members of the school committee to review the audit, and as Ms. Earl pointed out, the responses, and if there's any questions at all regarding the actions that they intend to take to address the issues brought forth in the audit, please let the city manager or I know, and we can have a further discussion.
Another little side note, all of these reports, the PowerPoint, everything will be available on the website. They're put up there every year. The new website is still rolling out, but everything should be available fairly soon.
Great. Thank you very much. Council Walker.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask that when it's quarterly and they do their meetings, that we can see some kind of a chart that shows that they've made progress? Because we have many things on there, and I don't want to go back and read every three months what's going on, but if they would do a quarterly thing with us, with some type of a chart, that you've accomplished something, I think it would make us feel as good as you feel accomplishing.
Yeah, and I believe that Ms. Earl and her team have been providing an update when there's been any material progress made on a quarterly basis, and I'm assuming that you would continue to do that.
Yes, there is a section in the new financial report that addresses any updates or changes. So if we have something that is completed, for example, that we've finished this corrective action, that'll be noted in that report as well.
Anything further on this item? Not seeing any? Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks, folks.
The next is a related item, the revised fund balance policy that was mentioned earlier.
Sorry, every time I went to press that button, it was just not so great. So as Casey Leonard mentioned, we have reviewed the fund balance policy. There's some different fund balance descriptions that are used interchangeably in here that should not be. They are very different definitions. They're kind of creating some ambiguity, as well as adjusting some of the language to be more clear, and follow more closely with GFOA, which is Government Finance Officers' Association's Best Practice for Fund Balance Policy. So I've included in the packet a redlined update of that, and I'll bring that up on the screen here for everyone to see. So the interchangeable definitions that I was referring to are unassigned and unrestricted. Our fund balance policy is for unrestricted, but very often in the document, unassigned is written in place of that. So you'll see that throughout the document. Wherever it said unassigned, it's been replaced with unrestricted. As Casey and Sarah pointed out in their presentation, many main municipal... As Casey and Sarah pointed out in their presentation, many main municipalities compare unassigned fund balance, which is why they provide that slide for you to compare with other municipalities if you so choose. But GFOA and other best practice is that it's based on unrestricted, and that is listed in here as well. On the first page here, it just discusses what some of the requirements are for that best practice. It also describes, which is not a change, but just to point out for everyone, that unrestricted means the combination of committed, assigned, and unassigned. So, if you're looking at that presentation, for example, you can get that total and why they got that 13.95%. So, some of it is just some grammar cleanup. One of the other pieces that I wanted to very specifically point out was this one here under policy. So, it's recommended, highly recommended best practice, that it is very clearly stated what any excess funds will be used for. Now, it's kind of been an unspoken rule what we're using it for, but it's very important to have it stated. It can be considered something that would be in the other comments section, for example, that your audit would provide, to say that you have a policy, but it's not clearly stated what you'd use that fund for. So, it's not a finding, but it's one of those best practice comments. So, that is now clearly stated in here. The other piece to point out is more clearly outlining if we fall below the target level, what that plan will be. So, it before just said that there'd be a plan within three years. So, now, it very specifically states how it's going to be restored, which could include a list of things, rather than just saying, I'll figure it out in three years. I wanted to be much more clear about what that meant and what that would look like for us if it were to happen. Again, that's part of GFOA's best practice policy, which...
Kelsey, sorry, on that section there, because it projected, you, what you're, what you're adding, projections indicate the reserve balance will be replenished within the 12 months. No corrective action shall be required. It wasn't clear to me, so my question is, is that still something that gets reported to the city council, that, hey, this is where we're at, but we're on it?
Yes. So, we would, we would still report that the fund balance is below the policy level, but we would also report to you whether or not that is deemed to be replenished within normal operating activity, or if this plan would be required in order to replenish it.
All right, thank you.
So, all the pieces I wanted to point out, does anybody have any questions?
Any questions? Counsel Platt.
Thank you. I had one comment on that piece you just went over on page three about the four bullets, how, how one could remediate the discrepancy in the fund balance. I think it is great to add some definition around that. On the third bullet, the increase of fees and/or taxes, I, I, I have a little bit of question with the use of fees. I understand why taxes would be modified to make up a discrepancy in the budget or in the fund balance. My understanding of fees is that those are collected to offset the cost of what it takes to, to do that thing. I don't see fees as something that would get raised to raise the fund balance. So, when this comes in front of the council, you might hear me bring that up again, you know, when we're voting on it or if, make an amendment or something, but just something to add in now. I have a little discomfort with the, with the term fees.
So, a note on that is that it says it may include that, so it leaves it as an option, not a requirement, as well as these are kind of the templates that is provided for best practice. These are the suggested ways to remediate these things. Again, not a requirement, doesn't say we shall do that. It says may, just to make it an option, and it would be something that would be voted on. So, just because I have a plan doesn't mean everyone agrees on that plan. I would be required to bring that plan forward. It would be voted on by the council for how we would move forward with replenishing that.
Other questions from the council? Counsel Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I have concerns like Counselor Platt. If, if some reason, when we've done our budget process, and when we got funds and we kinda went below in the fund balance, to make it up, I don't agree that we should tax taxpayers or raise fees in order to recover what we might have messed up by accident.
Well, I, I, I think that there's a limited range of revenue generating actions within the control of the council, and I think the broad policy here is should, it, it might not even be by accident. The, the council could pass a budget purposely that, as we went through the year, could diminish the fund balance below the, the policy floor in which we would then have to have a plan to go forward. And there's a limited range of actions. I don't think this requires it to be fees or taxes. I, I think this is just listing the, the ways in which the council might consider rectifying the shortage in the fund balance.
And I will say, those top two that are listed are generally the top two options that are taken, or actions that are taken when attempting to replenish, which is reduction of expenditures and delay of capital purchases. Those are the top two remediation actions.
Counsel waiting.
Only thing I would say is that maybe the language be changed to increase in revenues, because, for example, you could have a, a capital expenditure that you were intending to make, and you got a grant, so you could reduce the capital expenditure. That would raise revenues, but it wasn't a fee or a tax. It just happened to be something else.
Counsel Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I could see if it was a drastic emergency, say like with our homeless and trying to come up with funding for a warming place. I mean, we budgeted so much, if there's an emergency and we need more, and the only way we can get it is go into the fund balance, then that would be an option that I may support, depending on how much we would have to take out of it.
Yeah, so I, I think that's accurate. I think that goes to the second-to-last paragraph on page two, and I did have a question along that line. Clearly, the, the unstated policy that we've been operating under, and I think the written policy here is that the fund balance be used for one-time expenditures. It wasn't quite clear to me. It, it's, it's clear about operating capital projects, but the language it says maybe assign to other priorities through council action. I just wanted to gain a better understanding of what that language meant, because I had similar concerns to Counsel Gary. It could be that, you know, it snows 36 inches, you know, five weeks in a row, and we decide we need to add funds for that, or there could be some type of an emergency. I'm assuming that that language means one-time expenditures that aren't capital. Is that correct?
Correct. So, for example, the warming center that was funded for $62,500 by council action. That's an example, that that was to fund that, that project or that warming center temporarily with a one-time, one-time funding. So, it is intended to be another priority that is not capital, that is intended to be one-time, not ongoing.
Other questions, Mr. Manager?
Yeah, I think, you know, Kelsey and I went through the audit presentation earlier today, and one of the things that we discussed was that, if you remember, in this budget process, we really focused on rightsizing this budget and not overtaxing. And that was, that was a, you know, a deliberate approach, because we were not identifying, especially the state revenue share. We were consistently, Kelsey, $2 million probably under, if not more than that. We were budgeting less than what was, we were receiving. So, we, we started going in and closing that gap, which is all great, but what that means is, you'll start seeing that variance when it comes to, we're not bringing in the added revenue that we had in the past. So, when we look for, how's this tracking with previous years, you're not gonna see that access, because we are coming in where we need to come in, and that's our goal, is really tighten that up, come in where we need to come in, and not have that access that we need to, to take a look at. But we wanna make sure we're staying above that minimum threshold. And, and I think one of the initiatives that we'll work on in this budget, we had hoped to do it in the last budget, hopefully this is the one that we can start doing that, is that we do have a fund balance offset in the budget, in the operating budget. And that really, we need to move that out. We shouldn't be always bringing in that amount to help offset the budget. So, we'll work on, we're not gonna do it all in one year, but we're gonna slowly start working that back. And, because it really, this is what we need to focus on, and we need to have that approach. So...
Right. So, as City Manager Corle said, that the intention is to not be above that 10% to 14%, we should not be consistently above that. That means that things aren't being budgeted properly. That means that we're kind of underestimating revenues or having over on our expenditures. It's, if you, I can actually provide to you the GFOA best practice link, if you'd like to read through it for any reason, but best practice states that if you're consistently over on your percentage, then you have issues, in short. And that basically states that you need to relook at your budget process, relook at how you're budgeting everything, relook at your policy percentages, and determine if that's actually accurate for your, for your municipality. So, as RKO pointed out, we're within our policy, and that was a reduction of our fund balance by 2.2-ish million. So, we'd been consistently over the policy number for several years now. So, there have been funds that we've had to expend because we're over the policy. The intention is to end the year within that policy. It's a bit of a hard-moving target to, to follow along with throughout the year, but that is the intention. It's remain within that policy. That's not to say we'll be perfect every time. We might be over sometimes, and that's the purpose of this policy, is to determine, how is that gonna be used? What's the, the procedure moving forward if it does happen?
Other questions or comments from the council? No, thank you very much. Appreciate that. The next item's LA 911 relocation recommendation. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, I know we have the Washington Street presentation, that's gonna be coming right up, and I, I know we're already up against it for their time, that they will be presenting. So, I'll be really brief. You've got all the materials in the packet. Just as a little background, as we were planning the public safety facility, it was decided by the 911 committee not to be in that facility for numerous different reasons. Most one is that we'd have to have another location for 911 while we built a location, and that becomes a challenge, and certainly would have been an issue related to redundancy and, within buildings. And so, 85 Park Street was originally identified as a location that the committee was exploring. When I started seeing some of those numbers come in where they did, we talked with the committee, talked with you, counsel, about using Auburn Hall. When Police Department leaves here, that does create some open space. And so, we ran those numbers. Allied Cook report, report was in your packet, so you could take a look at that. You know, right now, that's coming in at about 2.6 million for all that whole transition. I think it'll be less than that. I've had conversations with them. Those numbers are looking, you know, they're being very conservative in that, but it's looking good. There's some things that we did not need to, we do not need to do, that they have in the budget, that will trim that down. Some of it has to do with the ballistic glazing and a few, some of the cheat rocking, so that, we're gonna see some numbers come down on that. Lewiston will be receiving their recommendation from the 911 committee as well. I think the best recommendation is to move forward with Auburn Hall. We did retain the lease at 95 Main Street in anticipation of this happening. 95 Main Street, if you recall, is where we had relocated the community, Business and Community Development Office. When they moved to 121 Mill Street, we kept the lease. We didn't release it. What we will do is, we will move the detective unit and some of that support staff that's in that section where 911 will be going in, over to 95 Main Street. It's already built out. We had already ran fiber. Everything's set up in there, so it's no, no real cost that's needed for them to go in that space. And the cost for the 2.6 for the 911 includes about $200,000 in lease payments for that space. That'll be shared between the two cities. And so, so I think this puts us on the right track, gets us where we need to be regarding timeline for the new public safety building. And so, we'll, we'll tee this up for a future, your next council meeting, to go ahead and move forward with the location. And then, staff is working through some financial options for you to consider, because then also comes how we're gonna pay for it. And so, so we'll have that for you at a future meeting as well. But any objections that you have, that would be on the, on your next meeting to go ahead and approve Auburn Hall as the location.
Questions or comments from the council? Counsel Cowan.
Just a quick comment. Thanks to everyone involved for, again, being creative and, and looking at options, because you've mentioned the 2.6 million for Auburn City Hall. I, I didn't, I don't think I heard you, the estimated minimum cost for 85 Park is 3.5 mil. And that was at the minimum, expecting it might go up. So, I just, it, it's a, I'm really glad you guys looked at it. It's a decent, decent reduction, even before you start talking about the cost savings that you've mentioned, so.
We're probably anticipating closer to 5 million if we were to go there.
Yeah, I think that, that there's a significant unknown risk at 85 Park is category four compliance. Clearly, that building will not meet it. There's no current estimate from the engineers, but one would expect that to be a very substantial expenditure. So, I think it's pretty clear that, from a financial standpoint, it would cost a lot more to go to 85 Park Street than do something here.
Other questions or comments on this item from the council? Counsel Platt?
Does a, does a 911 center necessitate law enforcement presence? Would we still have any law enforcement presence here? It's all civilian personnel.
Doesn't require it.
Doesn't require it.
Yep. Anything further on this item?
Great, thank you, Mr. Manager. The next item is Washington Street Transportation Feasibility Study and Land Use Study. Mr. Cousins?
Good evening. Thanks for, for having us, the council members, Mr. Mayor and Mr. City Manager. My name's Don Ettinger. I work for a company called Gorel Palmer. We're here tonight to present the Washington Street feasibility study. It's a project that's a joint venture with the city, the local MPO, ATRC, and, and the DOT. We'll do quick introductions. Again, I've introduced myself with Gorel Palmer. Next to me, we have North Star Planning.
Yeah, Charles Tettleton, Senior Planner with North Star Planning.
They're helping us out with land use planning, zoning, as it relates to the Washington Street corridor. And then, we have Acedo Landscape Architecture.
Hi, I'm Grace McNeil. I'm a designer at Acedo Kimball Landscape Architecture.
And they're gonna help us out with the softer side of this design, landscaping, lighting, placemaking, as well as visual, visual graphics for it that you'll see in the presentation. So, with that said, you all know Eric Cousins here with the city. Maine DOT's representative is Claire Winter. She heads up, or she works in the planning group at, at Maine DOT. All right, so we're gonna talk about Washington Street a little bit. I'm gonna actually go back to the previous slide here, and I apologize if it's hard to see the graphics, but the, the image on the right will represent, I'll try to use my cursor. So, the Greater Lewiston Auburn area is located here. This white line is Interstate 95 of the main turnpike. The, the box, the red boxed area is our study area. It's the main connection from the turnpike to get you into the city proper. Route 4, it's Route 202. It's also known as Washington Street. So, zooming in on that, that red box, kinda shows our limits here. Again, this is the main turnpike, if you can see where my cursor is, which you cannot.
Can you just close the box, the tools box on the left? I think that might get that slide a little bigger for you. Yeah. Yeah, good. Thanks. Yeah. Good. Thanks.
Sorry about that.
No, that's okay.
All right. Hopefully you'll be able to see that a little better. And you're still not seeing my cursor, so I apologize. Um, so we're looking at, uh, on the bottom, bottom to left to right, you'll see Interstate 95. Um, at the top is, uh, New Auburn or the City of Auburn. Um, so the corridor is the Washington Street corridor. Um, it's actually two separate barrels. There's a northbound and a southbound barrel. They separate, um, for about half the distance between the, the turnpike and, uh, the Minnetab Rotary. Um, our study limits start just north of Exit 75 with the main turnpike at Allied Road. Um, and continue all the way up to the Rotary of Minnetab. It's just shy of four miles in length. Uh, we have a lot of text here. I'll try to zip through this as quickly as possible. What are our goals and, and objectives here? So obviously it's, uh, we want to main, maintain mobility through this corridor. It's a heavy used corridor. There's 20,000 vehicles a day that use it. Uh, it's a major commuter, commuter route getting out of the LA area, uh, getting to the turnpike and heading south. Um, but in doing so, the study is looking to make safety and accessibility improvements to properties and businesses that exist on that northbound section of Washington Street. Uh, for folks that have been around long enough will probably remember there was only one corridor through here at one time. And it was that northbound section where all the businesses and residential properties are. Uh, and numerous years ago, Maine DOT came through, uh, for capacity reasons and built the southbound barrel, which is a limited access facility. Um, so in doing so, it changed the characteristics of that northbound section of Washington Street. Um, so we're looking to try to make that section safer, um, and provide better access to the properties along that corridor. In doing so, we're also looking to provide accommodations for all transportation modes. The purpose of this study is outlined at the top here in parentheses. This is a transportation planning study. So we're focused on transportation elements. Uh, we really want to make this corridor better or more user friendly for pedestrians and bicycles and transit. And the focus will be to do that on that northbound, uh, northbound section of Washington Street. The southbound section is a limited access corridor, um, and we are going to maintain that. So that's where your commuter traffic would go. Uh, again, looking at safety, accessibility and mobility improvements along both corridors. So diving a bit deeper into the study scope, uh, what exactly are we looking to do? Currently, the situation is you have, um, two separate barrels. You have, uh, one lane or two lanes in one direction, northbound, two lanes in one direction, southbound. We'd like to change both of those corridors to be two-way traffic. So to, to provide for one lane, northbound and southbound in, in each corridor. And we're really looking to make that northbound corridor more of a local street, lower speeds and accommodate bikes, pedestrians, and really encourage development, um, and redevelopment through that corridor. While taking a look at the, I'll say it's the southbound, um, corridor and maintaining mobility through that corridor for the through traffic. So those are really kind of the keys that we're trying to accomplish with this study and seeing how well it works. Um, the other thing we're going to do is determine the length of time that is needed for that controlled access highway. That's going to be that southbound corridor. How long can it function as just a two-lane road before we need to add capacity to it? Um, and when would that be? We're going to consider current traffic volumes and future traffic volumes. We'll provide connections between both of those corridors. We're looking at three locations that we're providing the connections. Currently you have more connections today. So we're actually going to reduce the number of connections, which we feel will make for a safer corridor. And then separate from it, um, kind of diagonal or crisscross from the Washington Street corridor, we have Rodman Road that ties into that southbound section of Washington Street, about halfway through the corridor. Uh, we want to maintain that location or that connection. But can we also provide that connection across to both, uh, sections of Washington Street? And is there an opportunity to extend a new road, uh, from that point, uh, across the Little Andersgoggin to connect to Broad Street? Um, the idea behind that is Broad Street is there's an opportunity for residential development along that corridor. There are utilities, proposed utilities being planned along that area. And if we can provide another connection to Washington Street from that area, um, it alleviates the congestion that happens in the new Auburn area, folks trying to get to, to the interstate. So, uh, so the study also includes a potential connection to Broad Street. So that was in, in, in text form what our scope is. This is kind of in, in graphical form what we're looking to do. So if you look at this graphic, this is our existing condition. Um, you'll see Interstate 95 is on the bottom left and, uh, City of Auburn is, uh, to, on the right-hand side of the screen. Uh, the two, two white lines inside the, the box are, is Washington Street, north and south. Um, and so currently there is a northbound direction that's one-way and two lanes. And then there's a southbound direction that's one-way and two lanes with a connection to Ro, uh, Rodman Road. What we're looking to do is to change those patterns. So the mobility corridor will now be two-way traffic, will connect to Rodman. Um, and the other corridor will become a local street. So it's highlighted here in yellow, two-way traffic, lower speed. Um, but then you also see there's a connection between both corridors and Rodman, as well as a, a cross connection across the Little Andersgoggin River to Broad Street. All right. So as before we dig, dig into the concepts that we've developed for this, this study, uh, wanted to highlight some, you know, existing condition elements. So the existing conditions of this facility, we've mentioned it's two lanes and one, you know, it's a divided highway with two lanes in each direction. It's a corridor priority one, which is the highest priority in Maine DOT's classifications. They classify them one through five. Uh, priority five is a local street. So it's an important corridor for Maine DOT. This, these are state aid, state-owned roads, just, uh, for clarity. It's an arterial with 20,000 vehicles a day. Uh, speed limits range from 45 to 55 through that area. Uh, the photo on the top right is your northbound corridor. You can see the existing businesses that existed there before they converted it to a four-lane facility. And then the photo on the, on the bottom right is the, the southbound corridor, which is that limited access, controlled access facility. There's no businesses. It's just wooded. All right. We took a look at a safe, uh, safety review through this corridor. Um, we look for high crash locations. Um, and, um, based on the, the timing of a year's 2021 through 2023, uh, there was only one high crash location through this corridor. It happens to be on the southern end at the Washington Street Beach Hill Road and Danville Corner Road intersection. So what is a high crash location? Maine DOT classifies it that by eight or more crashes in a three-year period and a critical rate factor of greater than 1.0. Um, what is a critical rate factor? It is a, a mathematical calculation that DOT, uh, does to determine the types of crashes and the severity compared to other intersections throughout the state. So, uh, this intersection had 17 crashes, a CRF of 2.79. Um, our study will show a proposed, a signal at this location because Maine DOT has already moved forward in designing a signal at this location. So it's worth noting that just south of our corridor, Exit 75 with the main turnpike and the intersection of 202 Kitty Hawk are both high crash locations as well. Uh, this graphic will be hard to see. Actually, it's not too bad on the screen. The, this graphic here is a speed review. So, um, Brad Pino from, uh, ATRC, uh, was able to assist us by going out and putting some speed radars out there and collect data over a period of several days at each of these locations. So I think there were five locations collected. Uh, on average, we observed the average speed to be higher than the posted speed. Uh, not surprising. Uh, it ranged based on the location anywhere from three to five miles over the posted speed to upwards of 17 miles an hour over the posted speed. So, uh, we know speed is a, is a, is a, uh, is a concern through the quarter. A big part of these types of transportation studies is traffic analysis and modeling to understand what can we do and not do. Um, and so, um, and, and this study is no different. Um, the graphic on the right will show, it looks like five different circles. The bottom circle you see is there is the intersection with Exit 75 and Washington Street. The red one, that is a signalized intersection. Uh, the green circle is our Danville Corner Road intersection where DOT is designing a signal there. And then we have three purple circles. Um, that is our, kind of our split, um, through the Washington Street corridor. We have a mobility corridor and then the local street corridor. Uh, those three locations are where we're anticipating connections between both of those corridors at intersections. So at this time, we're proposing, uh, traffic signals at all three of those locations. And so as part of our traffic analysis, we wanted to look at three aspects of, of the project. Uh, the first would be levels of service and operations. Does it operate at acceptable levels based on the option we've selected? The second we wanted to look at, and this was feedback we had received from our first public meeting is, um, will this study change my travel time, my commuting time through the corridor? And that's important to a lot of the folks that drive the corridor. The third is safety. Uh, as I've mentioned, currently these corridors are one-way, one-direction, two-lanes. And we're introducing two-way traffic on these corridors. So, uh, a concern obviously with head-on collisions and things like that. So what can we do for safety improvements to mitigate those concerns? So, uh, we looked at three options along this corridor, focused on the mobility corridor. Um, those three options included one lane in each direction, a modified one lane in each direction, and a three-lane section. The three-lane section basically at each of the signalized intersections. We had two lanes entering the intersection, two lanes departing the intersection for a distance of about 2,000 feet. And then it tapers to a single lane. So on a three-lane section, what you'll have is at the signal, as you travel through the signal, you can gain speed. You have the ability to pass slower moving traffic before that tapers from two lanes into one. And that would happen at each of the three, uh, intersections that have the purple circles. So we'll jump into a little detail on each of those items as it relates to traffic. Um, first is levels of service. Um, so this is similar to a school report card in terms of the scoring system on levels of service. If you have a level of service A and B, those are good scores. If it's D, E, and F, those are not good scores. So, uh, looking at option one, which is the single lane in each direction on that mobility corridor, we actually had acceptable levels of service. Uh, option two, they were improved and option three was our strongest. Um, so, um, looking at just capacity and traffic analysis, we found that three-lane section performed the best. Uh, continuing down to travel time and looking at mobility. Um, so it was a little interesting. We had to spend some time thinking about how we'd analyze this and calculate it. At the end of the day, we actually looked at, I think, four different scenarios. Traveling northbound in the morning AM condition, traveling northbound in the afternoon in the PM condition, and equally traveling southbound in the AM and the PM condition. Um, so we ran some analysis to figure out how long it would take, uh, in the existing condition to drive through this corridor. And we determined it was about three and a half minutes on average to drive through from the southern node to the northern node of, of the split. Um, and then we compared that to each of the three options. Um, and we found that generally speaking, they take about a minute longer to drive, travel through this corridor, uh, because we are introducing those signals. Uh, this would be during the peak travel times. So obviously off-peak travel times, there would be less, less of a delay going through the corridor. Of the three options, option three scored the best, slightly less than a minute of additional travel time. Uh, from the safety aspect of, of the corridor, when we introduce two-way traffic, uh, this is what we're likely proposing through the corridor would be some type of center median, uh, to separate the opposing traffic with, uh, rumble strips. So, uh, the photo on the far right is actually in Portland, Maine. Uh, that's the Veterans Memorial Bridge, two lanes in each direction with a striped island in the middle. That one's maybe six feet wide. Um, and then it has rumble strips on both striped lines. So makes folks aware. So when folks do straddle across the line, they're not into opposing traffic. There's just a center median. So, uh, we feel that's a, a, a safe, uh, solution to those concerns. All right. So the next handful of slides, we're going to walk through our concepts as to what we're proposing, um, through the corridor. So I've got here, uh, some labels on the far right. Um, so as we've developed it, it's a big study area. Um, so we've kind of put some names to some of the sections of the, of the corridor. So, uh, we're calling the Southern Boulevard, uh, basically from the turnpike exit up to where the two roads split in the existing condition. Once the two roads split, the road on the left, which is your southbound barrel, that's going to be our mobility corridor. And the road on the right, which is the northbound corridor today, that's going to become your local street. Um, and then they're going to merge back together up near Brickyard Circle. And in that area, then we'll have a Northern Boulevard from Brickyard Circle up to the, to the Minnetab Rotary. Um, and then we have some slides on Rodman Road, as well as the Broad Street Connector. So these graphics here kind of show a plan view, top-down on aerials of what's being proposed. Um, again, I don't think you'll see my cursor. You will not. So on the far left, upper left is the park and ride lot from Exit 75. Um, and so as we travel from left to right, we're traveling from south to north here, uh, traveling under the main turnpike, uh, bridge, interstate bridges. Um, East Hardscrabble is on the right top of the view here. So, uh, some recommendations here, we'll start with, um, access management. Allied Road is on the bottom view of the screen to the, to the left. Um, that currently is unsignalized, full access to a couple of businesses in that area. Uh, pretty heavy truck traffic in and out of there. Um, and they're crossing a four-lane facility, unsignalized to get in and out. It's dangerous if you're ever out there watching. So, uh, we are actually proposing something different with Allied. We'd like to restrict left turn movements, only allow right in and right out to that facility and provide them with a second access to those businesses, which we'll share later in the slides. Uh, similarly, East Hardscrabble, uh, you come, if you're heading north, you go under the turnpike bridge and it's that first left right there, real sharp left. Um, that is not a high crash location, but that is unsafe. So we are recommending restricting those left turn movements. No left in and no left out of, of East Hardscrabble. Right turn in and right turnout is allowed. Um, they can use, um, the, the intersection to the south, Kitty Hawk, um, to get access there. Or the next intersection to the north will now be signalized. So that will give them access. Um, in terms of, in terms of, uh, bike and pedestrian accommodations, you'll see on both sides of this corridor, we're proposing separated shared-use pathways. So a 10-foot wide, uh, paved pathway for bikes and peds. Uh, on the top of the, of the view, that pathway starts at the park and ride lot. So that could be a trailhead for people to park and start biking. Um, that will continue up to the signalized intersection with, um, Beach Hill Road. On the bottom of the screen here, you'll see a pathway extending to Allied Road and stopping. Uh, we understand there is a Casco Bay Trail being planned coming out of the City of Portland along a rail, might be the old St. Lawrence and Atlantic Railroad Line. That's supposed to go up to maybe Danville Junction, which is not too far from this location. So there's a vision here of a potential trail network all the way to Portland from this location. Um, so we're proposing a trail on the bottom of this view and that will continue all the way for our entire study limits. It will follow the local street as when we have the separation. As we continue.
If I can interrupt you at this point, um, let's take a break. Um, and we'll, we'll pick this back up, uh, under section three of our agenda, communications, presentations and recognitions, because we're going, we only have about two minutes left. And I think you have a little more, uh, presentation than that. So, so, uh, the council will be in recess until 7:00 PM and we'll convene the council meeting then and we'll pick this up, um, again, under section three of the agenda.
Thank you. Thank you.
We're not as far behind as we thought. You're on there.
7:01 according to Verizon.
The October 6, 2025 Auburn City Council meeting will be called to order. Please join us in a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If we could have the councilors introduce themselves, starting with Council Gary.
Good evening. Belinda Gary, City Councilor at Large.
Good evening. Rick Whiting, City Council for Ward 1.
Good evening. Tim Cowan, City Council for Ward 2.
Good evening. Steve Milks, City Council, Ward 3.
Good evening. Jeff Harmon, Mayor.
Good evening. Lee Roy Walker, Council, Ward 5.
Good evening. Adam Platt, City Councilor at Large.
Good evening. Brennan Edwards, Student Representative.
Good evening. Mubarak Abdullah, He Student Representative.
Phil Crowell, City Manager.
Thank you. The first item is consent agenda. There's one item on the consent agenda this evening confirming Chief Moens' appointment of Andrew St. Pierre as a Constable with Firearms. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Seconded by Council Walker, seconded by Councilor Milks. All those in favor? Opposed? Six having voted in affirmative, none in the negative. The motion is adopted. The next item is approval of the minutes of September 15, 2025, for the regular city council meeting. Are there any errors or corrections? Council Cowan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under Section 7B, City Council's reports, if we could add in, Council Gary spoke on the positive resident meeting with the mayor in the first statement there.
Any other errors or corrections? Is there a motion to accept the minutes?
Motion to move.
Moved by Council Walker. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Council Cowan. All those in favor? Opposed? Six having voted in affirmative and none in the negative, the motion is adopted. We'll move on to communications, presentations, and recognitions, and the first item tonight is the John Jenkins Hearts Hand and Leadership Service Award. So for those that don't know, the John Jenkins Hearts and Minds Award is a prestigious community service award established to honor individuals, groups, or organizations that have made a significant impact on the quality of life of our city. The award recognizes those who demonstrate qualities such as significant and meaningful service to the community, exceptional commitment to volunteerism, unselfish leadership and collaboration, creativity, cooperation, and hard work and service to others, inspiration to others as a role model, especially youth, and exemplary leadership and civic activities. This award was named in honor of former Mayor John Jenkins, who passed away in 2020. And all of those here tonight that knew John, those were qualities that John tried to live every day, and we try to recognize people in our city who live those qualities every day themselves. So this year, it's my pleasure to present the 2025 Mayor John Jenkins Hearts and Hands Leadership and Service Award to Rita Bodry. So all of you that know Rita, know that she lives those values every day. She's deeply concerned about our city and supporting the people in our city, especially the youth in our city. Rita has worked tirelessly for years to promote the PAL Center. From its inception to today, when we now have a new center that without Rita, it never would have happened. Rita was always the one that was thinking ahead, how we can provide better services to the youth in our community, how we can help underprivileged kids in our downtown core, and, but for Rita, that wouldn't have happened. So Rita, it's with great pleasure that we present the Mayor Jenkins Award to you this year. Thank you very much. So this is from Ann Parker. Those of you who don't know Ann, she's a longtime best friend, partner, and significant other of John Jenkins, and this is a letter that Ann sent along. She wasn't able to be here tonight because she's out of state, but she wanted us to read this during the presentation. It says, "Dear Rita, I was so hoping to be at the meeting tonight and be part of your special award presentation. I had a previous commitment out of state and was not able to drive back in time to be with you in person. I want to offer my sincere congratulations to you on being this year's recipient of the John Jenkins Hearts and Hand Leadership and Service Award. It seems like a long name for an award, but is a perfect description of all that one encompasses to match our beloved John Jenkins. Like John, you are not afraid to get your hands dirty and dig in when a project needs attention, and you put your entire heart into whatever the task may be. Your leadership skills are exemplary, and your service to the city of Auburn is above and beyond. Think of the countless people and businesses you have helped with your grant writing and your years of dedication to our fine city. The hours that you have spent to be sure the project for the new Auburn PAL Center has come to fruition. You are leaving your legacy for future generations to appreciate. John is applauding you from above, and I applaud you this evening. We're not the only ones who look to you with gratitude, deep gratitude for all you have done, and you continue to do for the city of Auburn. Just one week ago marked the fifth anniversary of when John Jenkins passed away. It's hard to believe that it has been five years. Thanks to this award and people like you, John's legacy lives on through others, and that always warms my heart. I always describe John as the soul of the city and the conscience of the community. And Rita, you fit that same description. I'm so pleased for you, and I'm sending you a big John Jenkins bear hug. You're the perfect recipient for this award, and I congratulate you again. Enjoy your evening. Most sincerely, Ann Parker."
Thank you, everyone, for being here. It means a lot to me. I don't know what to say. Thank you.
We'll move on to other presentations and recognitions. The next item is a proclamation related to Manufacturing Month. Whereas the city of Auburn boasts 40 transportation and warehousing businesses and 49 manufacturers within minutes of Exit 75, making it Maine's manufacturing, warehousing, and distribution hub, and whereas Maine is home to approximately 1,870 manufacturing business establishments, and whereas the manufacturing sector is Maine's fourth-largest business sector, and whereas there are over 3,000 manufacturing, warehouse, and distribution careers within minutes of Exit 75 in Auburn, and whereas manufacturers in Maine employ over 56,700 people with an average annual wage of over $67,000, and whereas manufacturers help to drive the Maine economy with $1.93 billion in manufactured goods exported, and whereas manufacturing sectors in Auburn include sectors in advanced material and composites, aerospace and defense, biotech and medical devices, blue and forest bioeconomy, and food and beverage. Now therefore, I, Jeffrey D. Harmon, Mayor of the City of Auburn, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2025 is Manufacturing Month in the city of Auburn. And it's my pleasure to recognize John Everly, who is the Operations Manager at PanelAM, and Jay Brencheck, our Economic Development Director. I thank John. He has been instrumental in working with Jay to host the monthly manufacturing meetings where we've had a lot of progress in being able to support our current manufacturers and work towards expanding our manufacturing sector in Auburn. So welcome, John, and thank you very much.
Mayor?
Jay?
Could we get a picture of you and John?
Sure.
Can I say a few words? Just only a few words, but just to kind of echo what you just said, it's been a great collaboration and engagement between us and the city, and it's very much appreciated. Thank you for that.
Mayor's getting his steps in tonight, so it's good.
So the next item is a proclamation for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas we have citizens and neighbors who have survived domestic violence, who are still experiencing abuse, and who have lost their lives to this critical community issue, the city of Auburn recognizes October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas in the last year, Safe Voices has served over 2,300 individual survivors of abuse, trafficking, and exploitation, including over 1,000 in Andrus Goggin County and over 250 in Auburn, and whereas the effects of domestic violence are far-reaching, directly affecting individual survivors as well as our community at large, and whereas domestic violence at home is an indicator of risk to the broader community, often escalating to include violence outside the home, and whereas roughly half of all homicides annually in the state of Maine are attributed to domestic violence, and whereas we recognize that domestic violence must be addressed by a community as a whole, as a community safety issue, and with survivor-centered responses, and whereas we remind domestic violence survivors that they are not alone, and urge them to seek aid from the local Safe Voices helpline at 800-559-2927, or at the statewide helpline, 866-834-Help. And whereas we urge all local citizens to embrace this month of action by participating in activities and programs sponsored by Safe Voices and other community organizations working towards the elimination of intimate partner violence, now therefore, I, Jeffrey Harmon, Mayor of the City of Auburn, by virtue of the authority vested in me, do hereby proclaim October 2025 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the city of Auburn. I'd like to recognize Kara Barney. She is Legal Advocacy Program Manager for Safe Voices, and I, I have to say that Safe Voices is, in this time of uncertainty with federal funding, has facing some really significant challenges going forward in the next year. They do critical work in our community, and we are all so grateful for what you do. Thank you very much. Okay, we will, a slight deviation from the agenda. We were in the process during the workshop of getting the Washington Street Transportation Feasibility and Land Use Study overview. We got partway through that before we ran out of time, so we invite Mr. Cousins and Goro Palmer and North Star Consulting back to conclude their presentation.
All right, so we were discussing our concepts for, for this Washington Street feasibility study. We had progressed from Exit 75 with the turnpike up Route 4 and 202. This is the intersection with Beach Hill Road and Danville Corner Road. This study recommends a signal. It actually shows a signal because it's, it's already being designed and planned by DOT at this location. So at this, along this corridor here, again, this is a boulevard, two lanes in each direction, turn lanes at the, at the signalized intersection. You'll see to the south of the intersection, we have a shared-use pathway on both sides in the light gray. in the light gray area for bikes and pedestrians. North of the intersection, we'll continue a sidewalk on the top of the corridor and a shared-use path, 10-foot wide paved shared-use path on the bottom. As we continue north on this corridor, you'll see another intersection. This is where we're splitting the northbound and the southbound corridors here. So it'd be a three-way intersection. To the right of the intersection is our local street will take off. You'll see the majority of the traffic will stay on that mobility corridor, and this will be a signalized intersection. Up to the intersection, we accommodate bicycles and pedestrians. From this point north, bikes and pedestrians will be only on the local street. I think, Grace, we might have a street view rendering of what this might look like traveling north and seeing the intersection.
Yep, so this rendering going left to right, left shows the north, or the south travel lanes. The right, kind of, your perspective shows the northbound travel lanes with that crosswalk in the center. And then over on the right, there's the 10-foot shared-use path. And then we're also showing things like pedestrian-scale street lighting in that median. And then the center medians showing some planting and trees going all the way as far down as we can on the corridor.
Yeah, so we're building off what Grace is saying. So wherever we have multi-use paths, paved pathways, we're planning on pedestrian-scale lighting and landscaping that'll be separated from the road with a grass strip or an esponade. So that will occur at the Southern Boulevard, the Northern Boulevard, and along the local street. So here's just north of that split. The split is on the far left-hand side. So on the top view here is our mobility corridor. Heading northbound, it's two lanes heading northbound through that intersection. It'll stay two lanes for about 2,000 feet, so a little less than half a mile, and then we'll taper down to a single lane. Coming from the north to this intersection on the mobility corridor, you'll see it's only a single lane coming into the intersection. The bottom part of this view is our local street. So we're proposing one lane in each direction with five-foot shoulders and that multi-use path, that paved pathway on the bottom of the corridor, and that will continue until we get to the urban center. The views continue as we head north. A prominent feature here, I guess, would be Chase Street as well as the Little Andrusgoggin River. Chase Street currently connects to the southbound corridor. With this design, we would terminate it. There would not be a connection with the mobility corridor. So it'd be a dead-end street with access on the local side. At the Little Andrusgoggin River crossing, our roadway template on the mobility corridor is one lane in each direction, so we don't need to modify the bridge at that, which is a cost-saving measure. The bottom view continues with the local street. Template's the same with a multi-use path on the bottom. As we continue north, the river now is on our left-hand side. Mobility corridor continues across the top. Going to focus on the local street here. As we transition over the Little Andrusgoggin, we start thinking we're coming into more of an urban, more of a residential and mixed-use opportunity. So our roadway template is proposed to change. We're eliminating the multi-use path and presenting basically bike lanes on both sides once we get into this urban area. So it'll be buffered bike lanes for a short distance. When we get into the urban center, we'll propose on-street parking with bike lanes as well. Since it is a local street, we want to control speeds. We're looking at 35 miles an hour coming into this area and then 25 through here. We'll have mid-block crosswalks. There'll be raised crosswalks, traffic calming features. We're encouraging low speeds through this local street corridor. So we're continuing now. We see another intersection here. This is going to be the Rodman Road connection. So you'll kind of see when we show a few other slides, but Rodman comes from the west into the mobility corridor. With our design, we're proposing an aggregate signalized intersection here and a connection over to the local street as well, which does not happen right now. I think you have to use maybe Miami Ave and Fillmore Street to get there. So we provide a direct connection to the local street, and then you see it actually is going to continue. That connection would continue across to Broad Street. So we'll have that on another graphic. On the local street side, I think Grace has got a few slides, some visuals to share with you.
Yes, so this is looking at the local street, and we have two versions of, I guess, roadway organization. This first one, Version A, follows the plan as Don presented, looking at, starting from left to right. We've got our sidewalk, a three-foot planted median, then your separated bike lane, your eight-foot planted median that also on either side includes your street parking, and then your travel lanes. In the middle there, a raised crosswalk. And then same thing on the other side. Again, we're showing pedestrian-scale lighting. And then you might notice the large, kind of, white walls on the edges there. That's showing potential building infill. The purpose of this proposed local street design is to make it what's called a complete street, which would include all of the necessary amenities to create what's kind of like a Main Street condition, so providing opportunity for businesses to infill once the street infrastructure is created. And then here is a section that kind of breaks down that organization in a slightly more easy-to-read way. So there's our six-foot sidewalk, our planted median that includes some pedestrian-scale lighting, your bike lane that's at the same elevation as the sidewalk, your eight-foot planted median and curbing, travel lanes, and then the same thing on the other side, also showing that potential future infill on the edges. And then this is the Version B that is slightly different. Similar concept, but in this instance, we're showing the sidewalk and the bike lanes together to create kind of a 11-foot pathway that we're showing the sidewalk with a different material. Could be brick, could be concrete. And the bike lane with asphalt similar to the road. This differentiation between the lanes is done in a lot of different ways. Could be with paint, could be with marking. We're just showing a material change here. But from left to right, we've got our sidewalk and bike lane, then the eight-foot planted median with the street parking kind of on other sides behind where you're standing and in front of where you are. That same center raised crosswalk, and then the same thing on the other side, and also showing that infill. And then again, here's a section that breaks that down with the sidewalk and bike lanes being larger and slightly further away from the road, and with the on-street parking being on the opposite side, we can accommodate slightly larger trees there from what you saw in the past option. But again, six-foot sidewalk, your five-foot bike lane, three-foot planted median with curbing, and your on-street parking, and then travel lanes. So same amount of space, just different organization between Versions A and Version B.
Thank you, Grace. So we have not selected Option A or B yet. We're still kind of working through the evaluation of both. So we're going to continue back with these top-down graphics, our layout on aerials here. So the Rodman Road intersection is on our far-left-hand side now. We're continuing north. The top view here is our mobility corridor. The theme is the same. Two lanes exiting each intersection for about 2,000 feet, and then it drops down to a single lane in both directions is how that works. And then the bottom view is our local street. We're in the urban center, so we have on-street parking through here as well as separated bike facilities. And as we continue north, the far-right here, we get up to Brickyard Circle finally. So that's where the two corridors merge again. So we're proposing a four-way intersection with Brickyard and the local street in this area here. So patterns are the same as the previous slides. If we jump to this slide now, we're at Brickyard. You see, it looks a little more familiar with the half-circle. We'll maintain access on both sides of Brickyard. The north entrance will be a right-in and a right-out as it is today, but they'll be able to get access from the north and from the south using that signalized intersection. This is what we start calling the North Boulevard. So once the two corridors meet from here up to the rotary, this is our North Boulevard, it does provide for bike and pet accommodations through here with separated facilities. So on the top, we have a sidewalk separated by an esponade, and on the bottom, we have a multi-use trail, 10-foot wide paved pathway. There is also a future trail being planned by the city down in this area that this trail network will connect to. And then as we continue north, the far-right-hand side here is where we tie into what's going to be proposed at the Minnet Ave Rotary. So there is a separate planning study ongoing. The city has hired the same consultant team to look at the Minnet Ave corridor, a similar type study, and it will include the rotary. So whatever recommendations come out of that study will complement what we propose here at the end. I think we have a view here. This would be a street view of the North Boulevard. Grace?
Yep, so this is showing that Northern Boulevard condition. You can see both sides of north and south travel lanes with your turning lanes headed into that existing conditions on the left there. Our planted median with, again, that pedestrian-scale lighting that Don was talking about that follows through the whole Boulevard, and then your 10-foot travel, or 10-foot shared pathway over there on the right for both bike users and walkers, runners, whatever.
Thank you, Grace. All right, a few more slides on the concepts. Now we've gone back to the middle of the corridor. We're going to talk about Rodman Road. So now our mobility corridor and local street corridor go up and down on this view, and we're going to go left to right or from west to east. So Rodman Road is located towards the top, left-hand side. It connects with that southbound Washington Street corridor. We'd be looking to relocate Rodman Road and as that alignment shows and connect it to our mobility corridor with a signalized intersection, have it continue to the local street with an intersection, and then have it continue further east towards Broad Street. So the next graphic here has that continuation. Broad Street is on the far-right here. In order to get to Broad Street, there are two challenges. You need to cross the Little Andrusgoggin River, and you need to cross an acter rail line. So we've picked a location where those two facilities are close to each other, and we propose a single bridge that will span both of those. It will span over the river as well as over the railroad. Pretty straight alignment. It will connect to Broad Street. It'll be, it'll provide for accommodations for all users, so not just vehicles and trucks, but also shoulders for bikes and a sidewalk for pedestrians through this area. And then my last slide as it relates to the concepts, we're all the way back down to the beginning. You're looking at Exit 75. I had mentioned Allied Road. We'd like to restrict those left-turn movements. So this graphic here shows potentially three new locations for Allied Road to connect to 202 at signalized intersections. So we have options one through three here. Option one is in the middle, and it would show a new, basically a new Allied Road connecting right opposite of Exit 75. So you take that three-way intersection and make it a four-way intersection. Provides direct access for the trucks to get in and out, and it's signalized to allow all movements. Option two goes a little further south down to Kitty Hawk and ties to Station Road, and then that's a signalized intersection at Kitty Hawk. Option three, least preferred, but it would show an alignment up to Danville Corner Road, and then we know we're installing a signal at the end of Danville Corner on 202. So we'll evaluate each of these and make a recommendation in our study which one we prefer, but the study will recommend one of these. All right, so in addition to the infrastructure improvements that we proposed here today, we also have another aspect of land use planning that we've been looking at. So we, the city actually has retained the same consultant team to do a land use planning study, kind of zoning assessment through the Washington corridor. So if this project was to move forward, how might that change the character of mostly that northbound corridor of Washington Street? So next few slides, we're going to kind of talk about at a high level what that might mean. I'm going to hand it over to Charles.
So you can go back to the previous slide, I think. I think this is a good place to start with all these changes suggested. We're looking at two major changes to the existing built environment. One thing that I was noticed I would recommend you do as you kind of go through this presentation at a later date is when you're looking at the aerials, you look at kind of what's in between the roads. What activity is there? What uses are there? And I would also recommend, next time you're driving through there, taking a look at the existing businesses. There's some active that everyone's familiar with, but there's also some unused properties, some vacant buildings. What this project does, and what we look at this from a land use zoning perspective mainly, is what type of, when we do this type of investment, when Auburn does this, what does this look like? What does this mean for future development? So if you go to the next slide, I can, yeah. We're trying to look at this as an opportunity to catalyze this place from a land use perspective, economic development, getting more housing, getting more businesses, commercial activity. I think a lot of the goals that Auburn is seeking, a lot of the challenges that currently face the city, can be tackled or approached in part through this type of investment in infrastructure movement, and just thinking about some of the things that Aseido Kimball have provided in demonstrations, and then all of the bike paths. We're really building a really great environment. So we're looking at this safer streets is better for housing, local businesses, creating that environment. But we're also connecting neighborhoods. And this picture's a little hard to see, but the colors really paint a good picture. The yellow are existing residential neighborhoods. The purple is where you see some mixed-use, mostly commercial industrial development today. And then green is also that commercial activity. What we're doing is really changing how these spaces interact with each other and creating more opportunity for mixed-use development, but also a lot of infill development, especially when you go towards Broad Street. I'll keep it pretty high-level for now because when we talk about mixed-use development, what does that look like? It can mean a lot of things. There's a lot of ways to approach it, which I will share and go through some highlight and highlight some ones. But when you're looking at mixed-use redevelopment, it's blending housing with the local businesses, new businesses. That means jobs, people living close to where they work, but also connecting to a larger network of trails, open spaces. One thing that Don highlighted going through this is how there's a bunch of different trail projects kind of across Auburn planned in development. This really brings a lot of those together and serves that general area really well. So combining all of these and looking forward. So it's not just a road investment and making different traveling safer, faster, just more convenient. It's building and really investing a new part of the town. And these are just some recommendations. These aren't just the, are just high-level concepts, not recommendations. So we can look at zoning to allow mixed-use, higher-density development in this area, really increasing property values in that area of what can happen there. So increasing tax base as well. Foreign-based code is example of when you get to that built environment, that level of design, what does it really look like? And it's an opportunity for Auburn to really say, like, what do you want to see in this type of neighborhood mini-city? With all of this infrastructure planning, you can accomplish a lot of other things in terms of resiliency. Traffic and transportation are a big part of it, but integrating stormwater design into this area, especially near the Little Andrusgoggin River, so some more sensitive parts of the town can really be approached when you're really tackling, especially a lot of the industrial areas. But also just placemaking requirements. So in addition to the open space, trail connectivity, how do you build a place that people want to live, people want to work, people want to invest in? It's not just the town investing when you have private property involved. Businesses, developers, all kind of have the opportunity to really expand and grow that area. And there's a lot of opportunity. What we will look towards in our future recommendations is how can the city really support this, whether it's through TIFs, credit enhancement agreements, some public-private partnerships, as I was alluding to just now. But really, the outcome from an economic perspective is a long-term tax-based growth. So you're investing a lot of this in redesigning the road, building new roads, forming new connections, but it's an opportunity to really enhance this part of the city.
All right, we'll wrap up. This is our last slide. It's just on the schedule, where we've been and where we're going. So we had our first public meeting on the transportation planning study in April. We spent the summer focused on traffic, land use, and development of these concepts. We're here tonight for the council presentation. We're planning on a DOT presentation similar to this this month. We'll be kind of drafting up our recommendations. We've got to put pricing and cost to this. We haven't done that yet, so. And look at phasing. How could the project of this size be phased? We'll do that in November, and we're going to be going back to another public meeting in November. The goal is to wrap this up and have a draft report by year-end. So I'll turn it over to you.
Great, thank you very much. Questions or comments from the council? Council writing?
I agree with the concept wholeheartedly, but I have a question. Is this at all realistic in terms of working with DOT to fund this?
It's a great question. If you'd asked me that question two months ago, we might not have said yes. We're more comfortable with where we are today with our presentations than we were earlier in our study. To be fair and honest, we looked at the mobility corridor and considered a four-lane divided facility, which was pretty expensive, and it adds capacity to the corridor. And from a state and federal standpoint, that kicks you into a formal EIS environmental study or an EA study, environmental assessment, which is very lengthy, time-consuming, and it's more challenging to secure federal and state money when you're doing projects like that. So we've toned down what we're proposing here to try to keep it as cost-effective as possible. If we don't need the capacity on that mobility corridor, we're not going to show it. So that's, so to answer your question, yes, we feel pretty good about this. We feel better about this option than what we had developed a few months ago.
Other questions or comments from the council? Council plaid.
Thank you for that presentation. Just an easy question here. With regard to your scope of work that we've hired you With regard to your scope of work that we've hired you to do, when it comes time to talk about costing and phasing, are you guys putting together estimates, ranges of tax-based increase based on the proposal for development, mixed-use development? Or is that a job for us and our staff to pair the costs that you're putting together with tax-based increases or estimates of development? Do you guys help us get started with that? Or do we connect that final dot?
I'm going to give Charles a second to think about the answer to that. I will answer, as it relates to transportation infrastructure, we will put together construction cost estimates and total project estimates. It's not related to land development, but our costs will look at costs to construct it, to inspect it, to engineer it, and to acquire the right-of-way for it. So the majority of our corridor is inside, or the goal is our template will fit inside the existing right-of-way. The mobility corridor's got an excessively wide right-of-way. But the Rodman Road and Broad Street connector, that's a brand-new road alignment that would require some form of land acquisition to do. So we will price that into our costs. That is separate from any land use planning aspects of it. So I'll give that to Charles.
It's an interesting question. I think when it comes to funding sources, it's hard to say how things are going to be paid for just right off the bat. But I think looking at some of the proposed tools and what we'll have in our land use study is how effective they can be, pulling examples of similar infrastructure types. I think it's really easier, once we have these concepts in play, have the designs out and a cost estimate, we can start really chipping away at it. But really, we were at that threshold in this process of, we just finished the concepts. We're looking at high-level zoning right now. But when it comes to, how do we fund this, whether it's through TIFs, CEA's, looking for different grants, state, federal funding, it's a large package to identify, and part of the final study will have that element in it to kind of guide the council staff.
Council Mel.
Yeah, I think this makes a lot of sense. I like the way that you've designed it, and I think it doesn't make any sense to make it a big four-lane highway, because you can only drive five minutes and you've got to stop anyway, either way. So I really am excited about the idea of an additional crossing of the river and the railroad tracks. I think that's probably going to be one of the biggest costs in addition. But I think this is really exciting option and opportunity. And so we get the plans, and then I think we all figure out, yeah, how we do that. And there's a lot of different options, and we have a lot of relationships. But I thank you for doing it, because I think it makes a lot of sense, even though I'm like, oh, there's three lights now. It's going to take me an extra minute and a half to get, you know. But I think it makes a lot of sense. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Just to build on kind of the next steps, when the report is done, obviously we've gone through the public process. I think for a project like this to move forward, it would be important to have public support, you know, council and city support, but also DOT support. So they're a key stakeholder in this process. If you have the DOT support, they can try to leverage the federal funds that will be needed for a project of this size.
Yeah, and I'm hoping that we can really make that public meeting highly, high-profile meeting, and really try and get a lot of citizen participation. I think the only way it works is that cut across on Rodman Road. I don't think it makes sense without doing that, because you're shutting off other access.
Other questions or comments from the council? Council Collins.
Just to echo my council members, I'm really excited about this. I think it's a great opportunity. It's well thought out, and, you know, it becomes a fantastic entrance to the city. So, thanks.
That's a great comment. Part of the purpose and need statement is to create a better gateway coming into the city, and I agree. I think this will create that opportunity.
Our representative, Edward.
Can I just ask, are you always going to reach out to any businesses to see if there's interest at all before coming back to the council?
Business owners attend, not directly. We can work certainly with the city and Eric Cousins. I think Eric has been in contact with business owners, but business owners have been at, not only our first public meeting, but we've had two neighborhood meetings as well. And so we've had engagement from them, but Eric, if you can add to it.
Yeah, they've absolutely been invited to, and a lot of them have participated in the neighborhood meetings. And plus, we've had individual conversations with them. And this is a long-term project. It's a very lofty project, but it could be transformative for the gateway. We'll have to look at a lot of funding sources, including a potentially main turnpike, DOT, federal funding sources, all of those, every rock that we turn over.
Anything further on this item? No, thank you very much. I appreciate the presentation. The next item on the agenda is an update on the progress on the comp plan. This will be presented by Ms. Cafe, our long-range planner, and Mr. Cleveland, who's the chair of the comp plan committee.
Let's take a moment to get to the right section in the packet here.
Page 22, if that helps you jump. Good evening, council and mayor. I'm Lauren Cafe. I'm the long-range planner for the city of Auburn, here with John Cleveland, chair of the comprehensive plan committee, and we're here to present an update on the comprehensive plan.
Good evening. I'm, so we're here, the project team that we have working with us, as you may recall, of course, is Barry Dunn, who's a consulting firm. We have the city staff, Lauren, the long-range planner, and David Hediger. And with Barry Dunn, they also have a couple of subs involved with their project as well. We have quite a robust team, including city staff and 17 members of the comprehensive plan committee. And Lauren, you're going to do a review of the timeline?
Yeah, that's correct. So we started this comprehensive plan process with inventory and analysis, and then we moved over into public engagement and visioning. And then now we're in our action plan development. So that includes our future land use map planning and our policies and goals over the next few months. And then we'll have a final plan between March and June of 2026.
So we've established four or five project goals. Those project goals included an extensive outreach to the community, members, and collaboration among staff and the community on this comprehensive planning. We developed a vision statement that reflects a community's stated needs and goals and values. We developed a goal of achievable strategies to realize the vision over 10 years. We don't want just this to be a plan that sits on a shelf some ways here in Auburn Hall. We want this to be real helpful with policies and action plans that are implementable. And we want, of course, at the end, that the plan is consistent with the main Growth Management Act and gets state approval going forward. Lauren, you'll speak about inventory and analysis.
Well, so throughout the, or late spring and into throughout the summer, Barry Dunn and the committee and city staff worked to formalize the inventory and analysis sections, which include basically looking at current conditions in Auburn across a variety of subject areas. So that includes population and demographics, water, natural resources, agriculture and forestry, recreation, land use, housing, economy, transportation, historic resources, public and community services, and fiscal capacity. And how we navigated going through that, because it's a lot of topics to get through in a short amount of time. The committee was broken up into three subcommittees by topic area. So we had natural environment, built environment, and people and city services. Those subcommittees met two times in the month of June, two times each, I should say. And we invited citizen experts from the community who are familiar with these different topic areas to come and give their perspective and to add some context to the data that the consultant team was gathering. We also had city staff present at these meetings to guide discussion and answer any questions that the committee might have had, as well as the citizens that were present. And that process went smoothly, and then we went through draft reviews throughout the summer, so the committee had time to review. That was published to the community, and it's still published now in a story map form online, so if you want to check that out. And we're, it's not finalized yet, but it's close to being finished. So if you see something that needs to be fixed, the time to comment on that is still open.
We also established a very robust community engagement process, and Lauren will speak a little bit to what we've done.
Well, so about the same time, and following the inventory and analysis, the project team, along with the committee, completed a community engagement plan and strategy. I'm going to flip to my page so I can read through this. And that included a comprehensive survey of adult residents and workers, a youth survey of local middle school and high school students, a focus group event with 11 different focus areas that had attendance of about 80 people from all over the community. We tabled at community events, including National Night Out, the Powell Bat Center Backpack Drive, and the Lewiston Farmers Market. There were three open house events aimed at the general population that were organized around those subcommittee groupings for the inventory analysis. So we had a natural environment open house, a built environment open house, and a people city services open house. There were listening sessions at the drop-in center and a focus group with drop-in center staff, a youth forum, poster and dot engagement at various locations in Auburn, including City Hall, the drop-in center, and New Beginnings in Lewiston. And there was an online engagement throughout the entire summer via a social pinpoint website. And in total, we had about 1,000 mailings, and we invited over 3,000 people to participate in the focus group and the open house events, and also put those blastings to the public as well for the open house. And we had about 1,000 social pinpoint website visitors. So in total, for how many people we've mailed to and invited, that's around 15,000 invites individually. And then total engagement or inputs to date is about 1,800 people so far. And I will add that our community engagement, while it was robust throughout the summer, it's not over yet. So the committee is planning to do more engagement around future land use and policies and actions in January. That will include a focus, another focus group event, and as well as community open house sessions throughout that month. Now, John will talk about our draft vision statement.
You have new materials, and up here on the slides as well, draft vision statement. It's not fully completed yet. Waiting for some more input from the public, and we're going to review it again at our October 28th meeting as well to finalize it. But the vision statement is a very broad, big view of what the needs and values are as expressed by the citizens. So it's intended to be broader and more expansive in its direction. Included with the vision statement are four guiding principles that the comprehensive planning committee will use as they proceed with the land use portion. So they include providing perspectives and guiding development of a comprehensive plan and its components, and those include resilience, being connected, welcoming, and intentional in its effort. That will be followed by policies and actions for future plan use. They will be structured around these eight goals as well. The goals for, that were set out, that are showing there on the right-hand side, fostering a sense of community, that is, making Auburn a place where people feel connected, encouraging a broad range of affordable housing options for all residents, supporting a resilient economy that provides quality jobs, developing a safe and efficient multimodal transportation system, preserving and enhancing the natural environment and agricultural resources in Auburn, maintaining and expanding Auburn's recreational and park facilities, maintaining the existing infrastructure, and to make strategic plans for future investments, and to promote a thoughtful land use planning that supports a balanced and sustained growth and future need, and provides for the future needs, the growth of the city.
So when we're thinking about next steps, in October, the committee will finalize the draft vision statement. They'll then move on to developing a draft future land use map, policies and actions from October, excuse me, to December of this year. Community input, as I mentioned, will occur on the draft map, policies and actions in January 2026. And the goal is to finalize the map, policies, and actions, and develop a final comprehensive plan from January to July of 2026. So there are current and future opportunities to participate. There's online engagement. That's a consistent opportunity on social pinpoint. Again, feedback in January on that future land use map, policies and actions. And then also, you can attend a comprehensive plan committee meeting each month.
So we'd be happy to take any of your questions. I would summarize by saying that we've had a very good group in the comprehensive plan committee. They've worked well together. We've had a lot of public engagement within this process. We are both on schedule time-wise and within our budget that we've been allocated to complete this comprehensive plan on time and within budget. And we hope, because of our extensive outreach to the community, that it will also be reflective of the majority of the public's values and input into what they're looking for for growth in Auburn in the future.
Questions or comments from the council? Council plat.
I thank you for that presentation. Great to see where you guys are at in the process. My question is, so we've heard a lot about public input. I'm just curious if at any point in the process, is there any way to, like, see a heat map of what people are talking about? What issues are, because I think about what we can derive from the process as counselors and a lot of it. And this is probably one of the activities where we get the most public input in a 10-year period. And so it would be interesting if we have the capability of seeing a heat map of what are people talking about? Are they concerned about transportation? Are they concerned about development? Are they concerned about taxes, et cetera? I mean, we obviously know that anecdotally from the work we all do individually. If that could somehow come out of this process, that would be, I think, valuable to the council.
It has been summarized by our consultants, based on aggregating what folks' comments were in various categories, but they also show numbers of the folks who were there and the demographics. That's all posted on the website.
There's a draft community engagement summary that summarizes each of the events and what people were talking about. There's also our ideas wall. People have been putting post-it notes kind of on the website, and there is actual map where people are putting geographical pins and places around Auburn for areas that they're concerned about. But I would say, in terms of a best heat map, it would be our engagement summary to date.
Other questions or comments from the council? Council waiting.
There was a document we looked at a few months ago on the comp plan committee, and it had all kinds of individual comments, I think, from surveys. Is that accessible to the public? Because I remember wading through all those, and I was fascinated by it, but also sort of horrified by some of the responses from high school kids that just want to get out of Auburn and leave. And so, you know, that would be good for councils to look at. Sort of eye-opening, but you really get a flavor of how people feel about the city from their responses to those surveys.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up. We do have that document. It's not in our engagement summary, but I would be happy to share that with council. It's a lengthy document, including the comments that people put forth, so I can send that to council.
Any other comments or questions from the council? Thank you very much. We appreciate the presentation.
Thank you.
As a reminder from the clerk's office, absentee voting is now available. That's for the municipal elections, which is the mayor, council, and school committee, and the two state referendums. Absentee ballots can be returned to the clerk by mail. They can be deposited in the drop box, which is in the alley between the parking garage and the entrance to Auburn Hall. And you can also obtain an absentee ballot and vote at the clerk's office. And with that, we'll move on to the first open session of the evening. If there's any member of the public that would like to address the council on any item that's not on tonight's agenda, please approach the podium and provide your name and address. that's not on tonight's agenda, please approach the podium and provide your name and address.
Michael Norton, 91 East Men Lane. I'm here tonight to bring up the subject code 145 East Men Lane property for sale. Originally, when you voted to sell it, there were some questions on the RFQ. And when we got it, it's very stringent, almost makes it impossible for even a young business or a small-time business. I mean, it pretty much spells out, you have to have a lot of experience and a lot of time with the city, I mean, for a small-scale development situation. And not everybody wants to do 16 houses or 10 houses or whatever. So in light of that, to open it up to more public interest in buying it and developing it, trying to call in some of that RFQ stringent qualifications, I mean, I would never qualify the way it's written, written for any of that, which makes it debilitating. And in light of some of the state feedback that I've been getting from representatives and Senator Bickford, in light of, what is it, LD 2262, the way it's being sold, it's questionable. I know the city's position is that it's a done deal, but some of the feedback I'm getting, it's not sold, it's not done. And that states that it should be sold through a realtor. And it's not. So that brings up questions of how it's being sold. And I'd like you to review that whole process. I know there's a housing crunch, and I know the RFQ was pushing toward that. In light of LD 1829, the housing mandate, which is enacted but not fully engaged, I think by June of '26 has to be law for the city council process downs. So, and in nowhere in that law does it state that you have to sell a piece of tax-acquired property with those mandates in mind. So I'm asking you to review that sale process and take another look at it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there any other member of the public that would like to address the council?
Is that RFQ available on our website in the, in that section?
Yes.
Comment on that? Yes, I read a lot of that. And there was also another proposed bill in the legislature, LD 745 in the 132nd Legislature, which they proposed, some legislators proposed, to give back to towns and cities the right to do whatever they wanted with tax-acquired property. And it was shot down 100% to leave it to LD 2262. Just for, I will tip that.
Thank you. Is there any other member of the public that would like to address the council? Please approach the podium, provide your name and address. Not seeing any, the open session will be closed. We'll move on to new business. The first item is Ordinance 0710062025, amending Chapter 24, Human Relations and Services, Article 2, Section 24-23 of the City's General Assistance Program Regarding Annual Adjustments of Maximum Benefits Effective October 1st, 2025. As a reminder to the council and the public watching, on an annual basis, May Municipal Association is tasked with publishing the new schedule of maximum benefits. Certainly municipalities have an opportunity to adopt those or not, but there are penalties relative to the reimbursement if they're not adopted. The current reimbursement from the state is 76% of the program, meaning non-administrative activities, but of the program expenses. With that, is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we adopt this as presented.
Second.
It's a move by Councilor Whiting, seconded by Councilor Gary. If there's any member of the public that would like to address the council on this item, please approach the podium and provide your name and address. Not seeing any, public comment will be closed. Discussion by the council. Council Whiting.
Yes, that's only a question on the 76%. Didn't it used to be 70? Did they actually raise it?
It's 70%.
Excuse me, a 70%? Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, thank you, thank you for that correction.
I had this little dream that it was actually raised.
Well, we're hoping for 100%, but, Council Milk?
So just to be clear, this is the state mandated amounts that we have to, that we have to pay?
Yes.
As a city, but we're only getting reimbursed for 30% of it.
Yes, that's correct.
And we have to come up with the other 70%? So we really don't have?
The opposite.
It's the opposite.
The other way around. We have 30%, state's providing 70%.
Yes.
And these increases are mandated. We don't have any choice.
Yeah, they are required in order for us to be eligible for that reimbursement. One change that has come about, if you look at the recovery residences, there is a change to the maximums for houses that have more than 26 beds. So that reimbursement rate is 100% back to the city. However, right now, we don't have any houses with 26 or more beds. But that's a new thing this year.
Recovery facilities?
Yes.
Thank you.
Other questions, Council Plaett?
Does the raising of the maximums, I understand that we, we're voting to acknowledge those maximums. Does it obligate us to pay out those maximums? Or do we still have, is that a decision we make as a, as a city, how much to pay out to qualified applicants? Or do we, do we always pay out the, the full maximum based on what they qualify?
We pay out the amount that they're eligible for. So it depends on if there's zero income or if they have some income, but we can assist up to that amount for those categories.
We don't have discretion over give someone based on their qualification? Whatever they qualify for, they receive? Is that how it works?
Yeah, that's right.
But I think, to be clear, they don't always qualify for the maximum, right? General Assistant only pays what they're qualified for up to the maximum if they, as an example, if their rent was $100 a month more than the maximum for the size of the household, they would be capped at the maximum.
Yes, we'd be capped at the overall maximum.
Right.
That ma, yeah, that makes sense. And I guess one clarification, so for the budgetary impact of approximately $80,000, is that pre-70% reimbursement or post-70% reimbursement?
Pre.
Good news. Okay.
Mr. Manager?
I would just like to introduce Jamie Longley, who's our General Assistance Manager. For those who don't know, Jamie likes to be in the back and, and be quiet, but we appreciate her coming in and providing this information. But Jamie does a great job, but I wanted to make sure people knew who she was, so.
Thank you. Other, Council Cowan?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'm trying to remember, I think Glenn, that you mentioned the, kind of the trending in the general assistance, year to year, we had that massive spike. Could you speak to that as well?
Well, we are seeing our numbers are coming down, but recently, we're seeing an increase in intakes. So an intake is a first-time general assistance applicant, so oftentimes, they're coming in with an emergency such as an eviction or an electrical disconnect. So while our numbers are going down for the people that require continued assistance, we are fielding a lot of calls at the Auburn Resource Center for many things that are GA-related and otherwise. So looking forward or looking back, and when we anticipate that budgetary impacts, let's look at the last 12 months. Upcoming, we don't really know what we're up against. We do have some changes with SNAP benefits coming, so there are some people that might be eligible for food benefits, so.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments from the council?
Just one last thing. I think, you know, the question regarding, how are we trending? Just for the council to know, we do have, the leadership team meets weekly, and there's a few things on our scorecard, is what we call it. What do we look at? There's a threshold, and we track, we actually track this number. So we actually look at this number every week. Where is it trending? That helps us know whether or not we need to reallocate resources. This is throughout all departments. Finance has a scorecard for cash on hand. That's really important for us to know, can we pay the bills? And so, making sure that cash on hand, we look at workers' comp claims, that's on a regular basis. But one of them is general assistance, so that we know, what are we seeing? What's happening? And, because that could lead us to a much bigger issue that might be happening within the community, that we might need to reach out to other resources to assist us in determining what's driving this and what do we need to look at. It might be that there was a house that was condemned that we weren't aware of, or maybe they shut it down, and now we have displaced a lot of families. That will drive that. So there's a lot of things that we'll look at, but just so you know, the team looks at that weekly. We track the comp plan engagement numbers. So we have actually, what is that weekly engagement that we want to see people hitting? So there's a lot of different areas that we do, but we get that information from Jamie, and that helps us stay on track.
Council Cowan?
Just, I think that's great. And part of the reason I was asking the question is, am I interpreting correctly that, I mean, I know when we had that massive spike, you had staffing that you needed to allocate. Sounds like we're probably okay right now in terms of?
Yeah, internally, they've actually redirected staff as well, because that need wasn't there, but there were another, there was another need. And so they've, they've worked on that throughout their staffing, so that they make sure they have the right amount for intake.
Other questions or comments from the council? Council ready for the question? Vote will be by roll call. The clerk will call the roll.
Council Whiting?
Yes.
Council Cowan?
Yes.
Council Milks?
Yes.
Council Weitzner, sorry, he's not here. Council Walker?
Yes.
Council Platts?
Yes.
Council Gary?
Yes.
Six having voted in the affirmative and none in the negative. The motion is adopted on first reading. For the public, they'll be at the next regular council meeting, a public hearing on this matter, and a second reading. The next order of business is Order 9310062025, initiating action to the Planning Board Regarding Rezoning of the Municipal Airport. This item was brought forth by the Airport Board, based on some interaction with the FAA during their master planning. These are two parcels that are split between industrial zoning, industrial district and a residential district. The one on Foster Road, there's no residential structure on the parcel. There is a strip zone along Foster Road that caused the lot to be split between industrial and residential. And the piece off Hotel Road was formerly a residence, and the city previously split the lot so that the, the house was in a residential section that's no longer occupied, it's been purchased by the airport. And to meet FAA regulations, the Airport Board is requesting that we forward this item to the Planning Board for their review and recommendation in a rezoning action to change these two parcels to industrial. Is there a motion?
Motion to move.
Moved by Council Walker.
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilor Milks. Is there any member of the public that would like to comment on this item? Please approach the podium, provide your name and address. Not seeing any, public comment is closed. Any discussion by the council? The council ready for the question? The vote will be by show of hands. All those in favor? Opposed? Six having voted in the affirmative and none in the negative, the motion is adopted. The next item is Order 9410062025, authorizing the city manager to execute the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Auburn and the Auburn Fraternal Order of Police Command Unit, covering the period of July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2028. Is there a motion?
Motion to move.
Moved by Council Walker.
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilor Milks. If there's any member of the public that would like to comment on this item, please approach the podium and provide your name and address. Not seeing any, public comment will be closed. Discussion by the council. The council ready for the question? The vote will be by show of hands. All those in favor? Opposed? Six having voted in the affirmative and none in the negative, the motion is adopted. We'll move on to reports. Just a few items. I would like to recognize Jen Edwards, our Public Health Manager. She recently received the Cynthia Crocker Above and Beyond Award from the Greater Anders Coggan Humane Society for her work with them in coordination with homeless services and the services that the Humane Society provides. Also, I'd like to recognize the Airport Board, Mr. Labonte, the Airport Manager, all the tenants at the airport. They had a really great groundbreaking ceremony for the new tea hangers and the box hangar. You know, the tea hangers came before the council before. It's a really great plan where there's pre-approved a number of tea hangers, one of which to be built in this first phase. And the box hangars is a private-public partnership with Fielding's Oil. Again, it's a preapproval of a number of box hangars. This is a really great project to position the airport to grow as a general aviation service hub. And the last thing I wanted to mention is, the manager and I have met with some other member municipalities regarding Main Ways to Energy, and we'll be attending, along with Councilor Walker, a meeting of the board later in the week to discuss the ongoing operational and financial challenges that Main Ways to Energy is facing. With that, Council Gary.
No reports at this time, but a question to the mayor. I've been told that you're keeping up with the issues dealing with the homeless, as so that we can try to formulate a plan before we actually need it.
Yeah, thank you for that, Council Gary. So that, that's correct. I've had some discussions, the manager and I, with the City of Lewiston, and I've had discussions with Ruby Bean, who is the board chair for Alter 2O, Alter LA. Alter LA is the newly formed organization that will be responsible for any warming center activities and the emergency shelter in Lewiston. I think they've been productive. I think it's fair to say, we don't know exactly what the plan is yet. There is an intention to have a warming center and in the near future, to open the emergency shelter. They've just received the, an initial report back from the architects, so in the next week or so, they'll be updating us, because lots of the schedule will have to do with what type of renovations, if any, need to take place to support the warming center and the, and the emergency shelter. Council Whiting?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Been attending the Anders Coggan Budget Committee meetings, and it's been an education, and it's, I will try to continue to be educated. But I have to say, it's one of the most confusing, layer upon layer of budget mysteries that I've ever seen in my life. I'll leave it at that.
Council Whiting, the, the county administrators' proposed budget was an 18.99% increase, correct? And I'm assuming that that's been, or will be, an active point of discussion among the Budget Committee?
Particularly tomorrow night, or Wednesday night, when we discuss the jail and the sheriff's department, which are the lion's share, the way I understand it. I've got to dive into that. I've been looking, section by section, just trying to understand what I am looking at before the meeting.
Thank you. Council Cowan?
We have a Lewiston Auburn Transit Committee meeting this Thursday at noon. I'm looking forward to hearing what
I'm looking forward to hearing what the, first few days of the new vendor and the new design with the demand response, and how that's going. I'll report back.
Thank you. Counsel Milks?
Nothing tonight.
Counsel Walker?
Nothing tonight.
Counsel Platts?
Three updates for you all. At the last school committee meeting, the school's budget calendar was released. You can find that, link to the last agenda, the October, I think it was the October 1st meeting. Just as a quick bullet point, on November 19th, the school committee will be going over its budget overview at their meeting, and then on January 5th, is the city council preliminary budget discussion. So, that's all public on the website. Second update is that there is an upcoming meeting regarding the sixth grade at AMS. There has already been one meeting at Auburn Middle School, that was back in September. There's another one for public participation on October 28th, so I'll bring this up again at our next city council meeting. And, I had a third thing, but I forgot. We'll leave it at that, two, two words for today. Thank you.
Representative Abdullah?
Nothing for tonight, but I have a question. So, you know the Auburn Mall? There is like Millers, when you come out and take a left in your goodwill, there's this four-way intersection. You know what I'm talking about? It's next to Buffalo Wild Wings and all those other stores. I'm not sure if it's because not like a, not a lot of pedestrian traffic, but I'm thinking, why isn't there a, what's it called? Like a crosswalk going across, for like late nights?
I don't know. The manager's taking a note, he'll check on that.
Yeah, we will.
Thank you. Representative Edwards?
Just a few things coming from the high school. So, we had our first Alice training at the high school, which is basically the idea of you either lock down in your room, you run out of the school, or you fight back if there's an active intruder. And then, the Main State Music Theater had their first run at Edward Little's Auditorium, and we're halfway through fall sports. Golf has moved on to playoffs, though, and we have the homecoming game Friday, October 17th, with the homecoming dance then the Saturday after.
Great, thank you. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, appreciate that. Mayor, council, hopefully you've had a chance to go on and explore our new website. It is a little, you know, if you're just going on thinking you're going to go to the same link and get to where you had, used to go to, you might not be able to get there that way. So, it might take you a little bit to, to find it. There is a box, as soon as you open the screen, it says, "How can we help?" That is, if you plug in different things, it will take you where you need to go. So, it's a, it's a very helpful box, encourage people to use that. We do have a banner going across that does have highlights regarding what we look at for staff, is what do we get the most calls and inquiries about? That's what you see on that, that banner. When is my trash picked up? How can I get information about a meeting? How do I sign up for Alert, Alert Us? So, that's what that is for. I want to remind people that the project on Center Street and Union Street bypass is not a City of Auburn project. All those areas that you have identified as major concerns, we are communicating those. Please let us know. We're talking about the patchwork that we're seeing take place with this project, the issues regarding the sewer, manhole covers, how they're raised in some areas, lowered in others, that we have some major concerns here. We are communicating those. DOT is taking our information, and we're hoping that this project will get to where it needs to be, but we have major concerns regarding it, and we've been expressing those, so people are aware of them. And I'm with you, Counsel Platts, I had one more item, and now I don't remember what else. So, that'll be it for tonight. Thanks.
Yes, Counsel Whiting?
May I ask the city, city manager, I was pleased to see, when I was driving down a city council meeting tonight, I looked down Stetson Road, and I actually saw construction activity where the bridge went out.
Yeah, they started last week, so, yep.
Related to construction, I was talking to a friend today, and her father lived out on Hershey Road, and she just wanted to, asked me to pass on compliments. It's a beautiful road, and sadly, since passed away, but he was coming home from the hospital to his home and was able to ride on a very smooth road, and he was very, very happy of that, so.
Yeah, there were some major ruts on that road. Actually, we had a meeting with engineering just today. You'll be happy to know, we probably don't need to do anything to that road for 40 years. So, that's where we're at.
If there's nothing else from the council, move on to the second open session of the evening. If there's any member of the public that would like to address the council on an item that's not on tonight's agenda, please approach the podium and provide your name and address. Not seeing any, the open session is closed. There's no executive session tonight. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Counsel Platts.
Seconded.
Seconded by Counsel Collins. All those in favor? The council will be adjourned.